I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, December 8th, 2020. Laura, would you please call the rule?
Garcia.
Here.
Gephardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers. Myers, you're muted. Sergeant.
Here.
Lene Moran.
Here.
Ziss.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, specifically engaged lives. Thank you all for those of you who are able to join us today virtually. As you know, we continue to, we did have a few in-person meetings, but we've moved back to a virtual format, given the rise of the coronavirus in our community, and we'll be virtual until some of those numbers get lowered. We'll be hearing more from public health this evening. And then just another comment, we are going to be putting in some of the coronavirus information in the superintendent's report as we have been. We had listed it below it, but we know that many people joined just for an update on how we're planning around the coronavirus and its impact toward student learners. So we'll start with the superintendent's report. Rob.
Thank you, Board President, Marquess, board members. Good evening, everyone. As Tina has mentioned, we'll be giving a, we'll be sharing in regards to our coronavirus update in a moment, but before I do that, I would have a few things that I would like to discuss. First, if we could get Ann Cooper to join us, I believe Ann is here. Hi, Ann. Board members, on your personnel reports this evening, you are going to see that Ann Cooper, who has been with us for quite some time, done amazing things for our school district, will be retiring, and retiring as of this month. And I just, and first and foremost, you know, we've had some conversations, I keep teasing Ann that I'm not going to let her retire, that she doesn't get to ride off in the sunset. You know, it's, you know, before I make my comments, and I've prepared some comments, but I've never met a more purpose-driven leader around, you know, around food for kids like Ann. She has just been an incredible inspiration for our community and others. So before I get, before I speak, Ann, I'm going to miss you dearly, and I'm going to, I'm going to find out where you live, and I'm going to bug you every time, every time we need something, so hopefully that's okay. Board members, you know, it's really important that we recognize Ann Cooper for her outstanding work, both here in the Boulder Valley School District and at the national level. If you know anything about Ann, you know that Boulder Valley School District's Director of Food Services is a force to be reckoned with, and she's brought attention and changed the school lunches across the United States. In her nearly 12 years of here, 12 years here in BVSD and 21 years in school food, she's had the opportunity to show the world that her aspirations of serving students healthy, fresh, and delicious, scratch-cooked meals is not only possible, but necessary for our kids. She says when she first started in school food, most school cafeterias were serving prepackaged, unhealthy food, and Ann set out to change this, taking on the daunting task of throwing out chocolate milk and cupcakes, which certainly caused some angst along the way. But over time, she's been able to win over kids and adults alike by offering better meals, partnering with local farmers and producers to, producers to bring Colorado food to our cafeteria tables. This work didn't go unnoticed, it's helped to lash and launch a national conversation about school lunch. Through advocacy here at the district, her books, her nonprofit organization, the Chef Van Foundation, and her work with First Lady Michelle Obama, she has helped to revolutionize the food, the school food industry. I would say that Ann's outstanding leadership has been especially apparent during this pandemic. Her, since March, her team has become first responders, ensuring that BVSD families do not go hungry during this difficult time. Just this week, the School Food Project served the 1,000,000th meal, 1,000,000th meal for our community since last March, when they snapped into action. And we'd like to share with you all a short video about this accomplishment. About this accomplishment. Yeah, board members, and for those in the public, as you can see, every week is amazing to see the team filling up cars, trucks, and minivans with bags of food and milk, and then the team provides recipes so that families know how to use all the delicious produce. We want to say thank you to Ann, thank you for her entire team. This is just an amazing, outstanding achievement, and it goes without saying you'll be dearly missed. Thank you for everything that you've done for BVSD and for school districts, schools, and kids across the nation, and all your work over your career, just truly an incredible, incredible career, and we are going to miss you.
Dr. Anderson, thank you so much, and really, I want to give a shout out to my team, because those million meals were not just me, of course, you know, there's all of my staff, we have maintenance staff, transportation staff, warehouse staff, we have so much support, and so big shout out to all of the people that are out there doing these meals. We did 60, over 60,000 meals yesterday alone, and I'm just so grateful for the team that's making this happen, and it's been my honor to work here in the district, truly.
Thank you so much, Ann, you will certainly be missed. Board members, a couple of other updates before we jump into our update around COVID-19. Board members, as you know, we had our CASB conference this past weekend, I wanted to start with a congratulations to Stacy Ziss, who was re-elected Representative Region 5 on the CASB Board of Directors. Thank you, Stacy, for your leadership and continued advocacy on behalf of kids across the state of Colorado and serving on the CASB Board. I also want to, want to recognize our Chief Human Resources Officer, Mike Rados, who was able to partner with CEI and participate in a session on Saturday centering equity in this historic moment, district leadership amid disruption, and was able to give some powerful words there as well, so thank you, Mike. Also, I'd like to thank board members on the consent agenda today, you'll be approving the 1920 Comprehensive Financial Annual Financial Report, which is the CAFER, and I just wanted to, number one, just really thank our finance and accounting team, our CFO, Bill Sutter, Justin Patron, our Director of Accounting Services. And I don't want us ever to take it for granted that the CAFER is on the consent agenda, or that we have such confidence in our team that we know that those, that our annual audits and our annual financial reports always are looking great with no major findings, and that's just a tribute to Bill and his team, and just, Bill, thankful, thanks to you, thanks to Justin and the entire team. I don't, I didn't want that to go unnoticed, that's a significant accomplishment, so I appreciate you. And then lastly, board members, I had a very powerful meeting over the course of this past week. On last Tuesday, I had a chance to meet with 25 of our African-American teachers in the Boulder Valley School District, and it was, it was a powerful meeting for several reasons. First and foremost, our staff, our team has set up an affinity space for our Black educators to be able to come together and talk and support one another, being as teachers here in the Boulder Valley School District. Board members, we have over 3,500 employees, and by my last calculation, we have 70 Black employees. And so, you know, the challenges that many of our Black teachers and leaders face is this just feeling of isolation, so we want to make sure that we're supporting them, and I think it's very important for me that I am able to bring them together so that we can hear their collective voices. We think about becoming more culturally responsive as a school district, as we think about coming more diverse, looking at our hiring practices, I was able to hear stories, I'll continue to hear stories, and it was just incredible for me to be able to connect to this group of dedicated educators and hear, you know, what it is, the challenges that they're facing. And so I will continue to meet with them, you will continue to hear their voice, I think that it's my responsibility as superintendent to make sure that, that we're, that I do that, that I magnify their voice and share their experiences in our school district. Board members, you know that we're deeply committed to excellence through equity, and we have a significant amount of initiatives around this regard, and we have a lot of people dedicated to that as well, and so this group of educators, our African-American educators, our Black affinity spaces, is going to be a group that I'm going to continue to consult with and work with as we think about changing our practices, becoming more culturally responsive, and making sure that we're striving for excellence through equity. And so just wanted to lift that up, share that I met with them, and how powerful of a meeting that was for me personally. Okay, that is it for my superintendent's comments, and we can roll right into our COVID-19 update. Board members, we have, we have, again, our health partners here today from Boulder County Public Health, Broomfield Health, and so Randy, I'm not sure who's starting with the presentation, I think that we're turning this over to Dr. Urbina, I believe.
Yes, thanks, Randy, thanks, Rob, and the board. I'm a, 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 pour a second to Jeff, and I'll do my best to try and present the data, and certainly will be available for questions. So, as you know, Jeff has often presented this set of slides, and so many of these look very familiar to you. I just wanted to point out on this slide that we're still in the red on our dial, but we've actually decreased our incidence rate to 644 in the past, it's been above 700, so actually we're doing a little bit better, and I'll talk about that as we go through the slides. Next slide, Randy. So this is our two-week testing positivity rate, as you know, that's the number of tests that we do and the number of positives, this has actually gone down significantly, we're still having great success in getting people to get tests, and now our positivity rate is 6.7. Prior to this latest surge, it was hovering below 5, I think it got above 8, and so now I think we're heading in the right direction. Next slide, Randy. This is our hospitalization status, and I'll talk a bit more about this later as we talk about those decreasing, this is one way of looking at it, that we are showing that we are now.
Sí, estoy escuchando ahí la reunión.
Señora, déjame seguir con esta presentación. So what I'm saying is that, I may need to speak a little bit slower, that we're showing eight days of decrease in our stable admissions, and this is a better way of looking at it in our next slide coming up. Next slide. This is our new case rates by county, this is a very useful slide, one because it's colorful, but it also puts us in comparison to other counties in our community, and Helen will talk about this a little bit later, but you can see our red and Broomfield are on the lower end of things, which I think is good, we're actually decreasing, at least we haven't yet seen the impact of Thanksgiving yet, we're about, lots to see this, this week, but it's important to know that we actually had a decrease in our cases, and Boulder and Broomfield are doing at least better in this situation. Next slide. I think it's also important to point out, and I'll talk about this in our long-term care facility, we are, we are still seeing a significant amount of newly reported cases, it's still a significant problem, but it seems to be going down a little bit, and we're unfortunately starting to see an increase in the amount of cases in our long-term care facilities. Next slide. Again, this is another way of looking at the average of incidents, we're seeing, and this is a very positive trend, as I talked about a little bit earlier, we're seeing that five-day average actually begin to drop. As of December 4th, I think is the latest data, that number of new cases, 128, that's a positive direction, but we still haven't seen yet the impact of the Thanksgiving break. Next slide. This is also important to point out, because I do think it's relevant, particularly in the issues around disparity and folks living in Longmont, this is an important slide because we can see Boulder is the dark blue section, Longmont, we still is, has the significantly higher number of testing positive, that's the light blue, and in Lafayette, Louisville, and Superior are slightly less than that, but we still see a big chunk of cases still occurring in our northern part of our, of our county, particularly in Longmont. Next slide. This is an important slide, I want to share this, and I know Jeff wanted to share this with the board as well, that compared to our previous two weeks where we saw a rate significantly higher of kids that are in our early childhood, as well as our 5 to 9, our 10 to 14, and 15 to 17, that we were significantly higher in the two weeks prior to this last two weeks, and the rates have dropped, are going in the right direction, and I'm not, we're not sure exactly why that is, but we see this as a very positive trend, that kids are having less numbers of cases, and that may be because they're not in school, and that may also be not because they're, maybe because they're not being tested, since they're not in school identifying the symptoms, but it's still a positive trend, and I just wanted to share that data with you. Next slide. This is a slide often Jeff shows, and I think I want to point out a couple things, you can see that overall, all of our cases and all of our age groups are decreasing, except for one, and I'm going to refer to the 75-plus, that's a dark moon, and you can see that buried in the middle, but that's the only one that's actually increasing, and that's very concerning, as we've talked about before in previous Boards of Health, Education meetings, is that our most vulnerable population, particularly the elderly over the age of 75, are impacted, and that's probably why we're seeing an increase in both numbers of cases in our long-term care facilities, as well as in hospitalizations in this age group. Next slide. This is another way of looking at it, in terms, I alluded to this a little bit earlier, and again, this is very disheartening from my perspective as a Latino, that we're still seeing a significant numbers of Latino, Hispanic population affected by cases in this population. If you look across the board and all the slides, it represents a significant portion of our cases in the Hispanic, Latinx, Latino, Latina populations, so important to point that out each time we come to, we're still working with our community partners, and I'm certainly able to answer questions later on as we go through this. Next slide. This is another way of looking at our positivity, we're still, we've seen a somewhat decrease in the number of testing sites, but it's still, our positivity rate is going down, and that's a positive sign in many ways. Next slide. Another way of looking at our five-day rolling average of positive results, although I alluded to this earlier, this is the last slide, it shows that we had a very increase significantly, we went above 9 early on in November, and now we're seeing this, we had a significant drop prior to Thanksgiving, and now we're up a little bit, but overall, that trend is still much less than we've done in the past. Next slide. This is a very important slide that I wanted to talk about, and hopefully this, we've all have our fingers crossed that this is an extremely positive trend, and I'll summarize that at the end, that we're seeing, and maybe it's because people are beginning to take greater protection, and maybe it's because that it's the, we still haven't seen the full effect of Thanksgiving and the generational visits that happened during that period of time, but we are still seeing a positive trend, that is, a positive trend in decreasing numbers of hospitalizations. We see that in this case, a negative trend is actually a better outlook in terms of hospitalizations. Next slide. This is a very busy slide, and we often talk about this, but it's still, particularly the orange-associated parts of this graph are deaths, and as we talked about earlier, anytime we start to see an increase in number of cases among the 75 and older, and then we're very concerned about that death rate, and still, that's still a big problem, not only in Boulder, but all over the state. Next slide. So this is important, getting back to, no, advance the slide, Randy, thanks, to the green slide, there you go. So, these are important metrics that we're beginning to monitor because of the concern about hospitalizations that we saw a little bit earlier, even though I showed you a slide where we were starting to see a drop in hospitalizations. I just wanted to talk about the, this metric, which is level purple on the, on the, on the dial that we've talked about in the past, that at this point, Boulder hospitals, and we talk to them weekly, are not approaching crisis standards of care as of 12-1, and what that means is they're basically going to have to ration, as well as, as potentially stop admitting patients, so at least at this point, we're actually doing quite well. We're not, at this point, looking at an alternative care site, that's a good thing, and, and most of the hospitals are reporting sufficient personal protective equipment, which is PPE for the next week. They are still having problems with shortages, I think at the last Board of Education meeting, Jeff talked about this, the issue is not necessarily beds or the actual structure, but it's the staff, and I, I think we're still, 40% of hospitals are reporting staff shortages, so we're trying to work with them closely. Now, the challenge in the past has been that when you had a state next to us, or states around us, that may not have the same problem, we could always recruit staff from those areas, but now that we see the, the hospital challenges all around the country, every hospital in every state is having problems with shortages, Boulder's no exception to that. Finally, I wanted to just highlight the, the, the issues, even though we're not in crisis mode, it's still a significant problem that we see 70% of medical surge beds and 86% of ICU beds are in use, I think that's a big deal, not only because they're being filled with COVID patients, but obviously if you have a heart attack, a stroke, or some other medical issue, that you are in need of an ICU bed, then those beds are not going to be available, and so we're very, very, very aware of that, and we're very concerned about Again, a couple of issues, there's tight ICU capability, as well as, and you can see the rest of the data. Next slide. This is another way of looking at hospitalizations, you can see we peaked early on, late at the end of November, and now we're starting to decrease that, that hospitalization rate, and hopefully this, this trend continues. Next slide. This is a, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on, this is a relationship with COVID cases and percent of all ED visits, we're starting to see a little uptick of flu, but it's not significant in terms of hospitalizations, but I think it's important to point out that we're starting, we still have other issues in Boulder County, flu's starting to rise, we're still seeing a rise, and cases still coming to the ER for COVID-related issues. Final slide, Randy, oh, sorry, a couple of other things around distancing, this is a very busy slide, but I think the state does track this based on cell phone data, this is in Boulder County specifically, we, in the past, we've had significant issues around social distancing, in April, we had a big, 86% of people were social distancing based on their cell phone data, we're kind of hovering around 54%, we obviously wish that this would be better, but it's, but it's not, but it's a way of tracking people to see how much they're focusing and how close they're getting to each other. Next slide. This is, this is way too busy to present, but basically it shows that, 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 that way back in April and May, and that's the big peak on the, on the green or the teal slide, back then, the people were staying at home much greater than they are now, they dropped, we, we actually had lots of effects, very positive effects with our policies, where people started to drop down, more stay at home, you see the drop in the curve there, and then unfortunately, people are starting to get out more as we go up, and you're seeing a positive trend, greater than 50% now. Next slide. So this is some issues that I know the board will going to want to chew on a little bit. We, recently, the Public Health Order, statewide order, categories as educational institutions critical businesses for the purpose of providing critical services to students and the general public. K through 12 are considered critical for the purpose of providing meals, and you all know these issues. Data suggests that there's a low risk to have in-person learning for grades, grades K through 5, slightly increased risk for, for grades 6 through 8, and of course, 9 to 12 are at the highest risk in the school settings themselves. We still believe, and this is taken from the CDPG in-person learning in a time of COVID for schools, that we still think that the, the transmission appears to be happening from interactions outside of the school day, and then brought into the school as opposed to widespread transmission occurring in schools. And I'd like to, I wanted to summarize this because it's important data, and as I pointed out earlier, we're seeing a decrease in the amount of spread among those school-aged children, so it's something to chew on, and certainly I'd be happy to answer questions about this. Next slide. So this is our latest picture, and this is our summary slide, as we've heard before, the number of cases have stabilized and decreasing somewhat in certain age groups, except for the folks over the age of 75. Hospitalizations are decreasing statewide, and we're hopeful that, that, that trend continues, but it's still, the cases are still very high, and we're struggling, frankly, to keep up, keep up with all the contact tracing, and I know the schools were as well, so this is an issue for all of us. Right now, we're estimating that 140 people statewide are infectious with COVID-19, which is, which means to me that it's still not safe, and we're also waiting to see the impact of Thanksgiving, as I alluded to earlier, we should know this week, you know, as you know, it's 14 days of incubation, most of the contacts happen beginning this Wednesday and beyond, so we're probably going to see some of those effects in our data this week, and please refer back to our website if you'd like to see some of that, and I, and the Colorado School of Public Health modeling that we've talked about on this presentation, later on, we'll have this update, and of course, the, the issues of increasing incidence, hospitalizations are all M factors in terms of decisions around school across the state. I know there can be lots of questions about vaccine, and certainly Helene and I can answer those questions, but after this Thursday, Pfizer is going to be approved likely by the FDA, and quickly, lots of vaccines are going to be shipped across the country. We don't know the exact number, although we're, it'll be proportional, likely to be over 40,000 cases initially for the state, those will be distributed statewide, Boulder County, and I know Broomfield Public Health is also actively participating in this in terms of understanding where the vaccine is going to go first. All regions will get vaccine, but remember, as we talked about in the past, those prioritizations will be for hospital and healthcare workers, as well as long-term care residents and their providers, so we'll be talking about that more, and I'll be certainly able to answer some of your questions. Thank you for allowing me to present on Jeff's behalf, I rushed through the slides much faster than Jeff would, but hopefully we'll have time for Helene to present the data in Broomfield, and then have time for your questions. Thank you.
Should I go ahead and share my screen now? Hi, everyone, I'm Helene Lamzer, I'm the Public Health Nursing and Epi Administrator and Manager in Broomfield Public Health, can you all see my screen correctly? Can you guys see my slides?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so just to follow up on Dr. Urbina, Dr. Urbina is our medical officer as well, so we work really closely with him and Boulder County Public Health and Boulder Valley School District teams, so thank you for having us here, and I'll just add a little bit more on to what Dr. Urbina shared, as everyone knows, the level dials, we had the color purple added in terms, and then changed some of the information and restrictions and such in the red level to kind of just help it, help kind of set the stage more in terms of trying to keep people safe, but also trying to keep businesses open and. also trying to keep businesses open and strike that balance of safety and limiting COVID spread. So in Broomfield County, we continue to see a fair amount of cases. I know one interesting nugget in terms of where our cases are, we are obviously much smaller amount of cases than other neighboring counties, but within March through October, we had about a thousand cases, and in November, we had a thousand cases. So that's just really a staggering point to kind of drag home how much of an increase we've seen in cases. And so in terms of our two-week incidence, and that's been hovering in the six hundred, so six hundred ten, so that falls in that red zone, that red level. Our positivity rate has also continued to hover in the nine percent, so we've seen it at nine point four, nine point two, fluctuating to nine point oh. And our hospitalization rates are fairly stable, eleven days of declining are stable in hospitalizations. These are just some pulled-out visuals, just to kind of show the trend of positivity rate. And when we look at from June on, we know that that's when we started to have more access to testing just community-wide. And so it's a nice visual to kind of just see how much higher our positivity rate is. And as a reminder, positivity rate is the number of positive tests coming back of all the tests that are reported electronically throughout the state. So in, as I shared already, in Broomfield, we're seeing in and around nine percent. Our cumulative or two-week average in terms of cases is six hundred ten per hundred thousand. And as you can see there, that's also from June, how significant that uptick has been. Again, mirrors what I just shared at the beginning in terms of how many cases we've seen in Broomfield County and our neighboring counties as well. In terms of just kind of getting a sense of where are we at with, where does the breakdown look in terms of different age groups? We've seen this pretty commonly all along, and that twenties and thirties and forties age group definitely tends to be our higher age group. So twenty-six to thirty-four has been teased out as kind of the highest, but they're all very, very close. We, when we think about this school-age level group in terms of that six to eighteen age group, we're close to twelve percent of our cases in November are in this age group. So definitely have seen an increase in our younger kiddos, from anywhere from zero to eighteen, and then the rest of the breakdown has shown in terms of people in their fifties, sixties, and then upper seventies and eighties. This is another visual, just to show kind of what we're monitoring in terms of when we saw, so that dotted line represents when majority of schools were definitely back in more in-person learning. We started to see an uptick kind of happening kind of mid-October, and then that's just been an ongoing trend even after schools have closed, not, sorry, not closed, remote learning. And so just, this is just a calling out a visual of just the uptick that we're seeing. And in terms of, you know, where we see some jumps, they're all, all the age groups are seeing that uptick, but we definitely see about seventy-five percent of an increase in our elementary-age kids from late September to when we look at kind of November, and around thirty-one percent with our middle-school age group, and about forty-three percent of an uptick in this last month with our high school grade. And again, because a different graph sometimes resonates better for different people, so just wanted to show just kind of a comparison of what we've seen from April through each month in terms of that age group. And I really think this one just represents it visually really nice in terms of just showing you how many more cases we're seeing. And part of that is testing. We're doing much better job. We have a lot better access to testing. We were able to identify and recommend testing quicker, and people have access to it through their, through various locations and sites and through their provider, as well as we, you know, know that there's a lot of other events and gatherings that may be contributing to some of these increases in cases in these age groups. We usually like to just try to highlight similar to some of the things Dr. Vina shared, just some community trends or things that we notice in our case investigations. As Dr. Vina said, there's so many cases, it's just, it's not, it's not possible for all the health departments to reach out to all the cases. So I know one big take-home message is that if anyone is, you know, testing positive, it's really important for them to think about and identify their contacts and really quickly notify them as having an exposure, because they may not be contacted by a health department. And so it's just so important to kind of quickly get someone quarantined. In terms of where we're seeing that ongoing transmission, it's very common in household transmissions, it's real, we hear a lot of our cases extended family, or their, or their close group of friends, or friends that they may be often are with, or do different gatherings, small gatherings with. And a lot of times, people let down their guard more with that, and that's just why it's so important to wear a mask and really still maintain that distance, really still limiting those activities, and really just trying to stick more to just your household, your core household group of people. And in terms of symptoms, we, you know, we still hear a lot of cases with, this is mild symptoms in the beginning. We hear commonly headache, we hear commonly runny nose, sometimes GI things like diarrhea. And a lot of times, people don't make that connection that it's COVID, and they don't even kind of question it. And one of the most common things we'll hear is people will say, well, I don't have a fever, so I didn't think about getting tested. And we just think that's so important to make sure that everyone in the community listens to that and pays attention, that only about half of our cases end up having a fever at all. So it's definitely not the only telltale symptom to watch for, and just a reminder of some of these mild symptoms like headache, runny nose, congestion, fatigue, another really common one that we hear. We, as Dr. Vina said, alluded to, that we definitely are watching in terms of if we're going to see what additional uptick we're going to see with Thanksgiving holiday. I think that a lot of Coloradans really, really did buckle down and really did do the, you know, that hard choice of limiting their exposure, staying home, staying small for that Thanksgiving holiday. But we will continue to watch how these cases trend, and we've got more holidays as the month goes on. And so this is definitely a hard month with mental health and wanting to, you know, missing the things that we normally get to do. So it's definitely hard and the time to support each other and just kind of be patient with each other, because we're all kind of missing and tired of that COVID fatigue. And as we've seen before, that just cross jurisdiction, it's not that it just stays in Broomfield County, it's not just stays in Boulder County. We know that there's touches happen in a lot of different settings across different counties, through different activities, work exposures. We're seeing more cases and outbreaks in child cares and childcare centers, and as well as other kinds of local events and religious events and work gatherings, activities. And just quickly, just to add a little bit more, similar to what Dr. Vina shared, we are excited and hopeful about the vaccines that are coming. The FDA will be meeting this week to talk about Pfizer, and I believe next week for Moderna, so that's very exciting news. And safety is absolutely an important, critical piece of this, and it is being thoroughly reviewed to make sure that it is a safe rollout for all age groups that will be receiving the vaccine. The CDC, state health departments, and all the different local health agencies are working, working together. We're working also with hospitals, we're working with pharmacies. It's a really amazing group collaboration, but it's unlike anything ever in terms of the mass amount that we're looking to do in such a short time. So there's a lot of planning, a lot of logistics still to be figured out, and changes literally daily, and as it kind of keeps rolling out. So we'll continue to try to keep the public informed. There are priority tiers, as we've shared, there's likely to be about forty-seven thousand doses in that first initial rollout, and more to come, mostly each week is what we're hearing, and more to come as we roll into 2021. So we will have to continue to finalize those priority tiers and looking at, you know, healthcare providers, long-term care residents and staff, other first responders, and other critical staffing. And so that will, that will be finalized as part of the FDA conversations with CDC and the state health department. And that two initial vaccines that are coming out, there are expected to be two doses, and they vary slightly in terms of, one is twenty-one days for the second dose, one is twenty-eight days, and more information will be coming in terms of just things to watch for, for side effects after the FDA meets. We'll have more information on just kind of educating the public on what to expect on those vaccines, and many, many more on the expected forefront coming February 2021, and so on. And then just to share our information, our website is broomfields.org/covid, and we do track a weekly scorecard as well. We've, you know, talked about how important the messaging is to reversing the trend. We're still in that phase where we really need to turn down the trend of the uptick that we've seen happen, and hope that we can get through this year with less cases and less deaths. And thank you for everybody's ongoing partnership, and we're, as Dr. Vina said, happy to answer any questions. I will stop sharing.
I believe that Mark Crespo is going to take it from here.
I am. Thanks very much, Randy. So we'll give a quick COVID-19 update related to what we're doing in schools and where we're headed. Randy, next slide. So let's start first with our current situation. Thank you so much. With our current situation, as we all know, most of our students remain in remote learning, and we really are very excited and constantly working to bring them back as quickly as possible. We've done some targeted in-person instruction for special education students. As a matter of fact, kicking off today, super excited to hear from our buildings that our students, in some cases, were coming back, and lots of joy around that targeted population. As anything moves forward, we continue to plan. Moving forward, we are working hard to plan for the return of students in-person learning, the arrival, as was mentioned, of the upcoming vaccine and all of those, what that entails, as well as our extension and summer school opportunities for our students. And then, as always, around this time of year, we're planning for 21, 22 school year, and also anticipating what those changes might look like moving forward due to the pandemic. So our most current, sorry about that. So as everyone knows, we are focused on bringing our students back as quickly as we possibly can. We know that in-person learning is best for our students, and that, as we've heard repeatedly, our layered approach to having students in school has been shown to be safe for students, staff and students. And we appreciate all of the work that everyone has done, our teachers, our community, our parents, our health services staff, to make sure that our kids do have that layered approach, and that they are safe in school. We're constantly monitoring the situation. As you know, our Boulder County Health and our Broomfield County Health Partners are always working closely with us. We definitely have been following the lead from our public health experts, and certainly will continue to do that. As many of you know, there's a Governor's Working Group, and we look forward to the additional developments that may be coming from that group that's working really hard on this topic as well. So we want to take a second to just share how much we are grateful for the constant feedback and input that our parents and our community and our staff share, teachers. And one of the things that you may have noticed is that we recently did a relaunch, again, always looking for substitute teachers. We really recognize the importance of having a deep pool of sub-teachers, our guest teachers, to be able to come in and work with our students when our teachers are not able to. And that is both virtual and in-person. The requirements are to have Colorado Department of Education requirement met through certification. The goal is to instruct students by following lesson plans that are provided, and the pay is up to $140 a day. We're working hard to recruit more staff that can play a role in our guest teacher, substitute teacher program. One of the other things that really came about recently in talking to a parent, specifically one parent, around support for when a teacher is out and we don't have the staff. So as we know, often during our quarantining, our staff are required to work from home or work virtually, and in some cases, we will have students and have had students that are still able to come in. So how do we provide that monitoring? And we've asked and brainstormed and have come up with a plan for a temporary employee position that includes what's called a classroom monitor. One huge shout-out to HR and legal for getting this off the ground as quickly as possible. Our classroom monitors would supervise children when teachers are quarantined or unable to be in person. The pay is $15 an hour, and it requires a background check and a brief training. And our goal is to recruit five monitors at each school. And I think it's really important here to share that we absolutely know how many of our parent volunteers, how many of our community volunteers can't wait to get back into our buildings and support our students in this really trying time. And I would highly recommend that although you may not need the $15 an hour, I certainly think that it's a great way for us to access our volunteer groups, to be able to come in our buildings and help our students. We are limited around bringing volunteers specifically into the building, but by making classroom monitors and temporary volunteer, temporary employees part of the Boulder Valley family, then we're able to really access, provide access for our kids. So you can see we have a lofty goal, but we're pretty sure that we can get there. Our community always stands up and helps us and supports us, so we're throwing out that ask, and you saw that in a recent communication that went out last night. Next slide. The other thing that we've been doing, as we've been brainstorming, thanks to our community again, are health monitor volunteers. So these individuals would not come into the buildings, they would check on our students. So we have a really comprehensive approach to our students being out of school and when we know a student is absent. What we're facing is that we have a really comprehensive plan for those students that we know have, are looking into a COVID situation, because we have a protocol and system that goes into that play. We know students through our attendance advocates and through our re-engagement specialists and through some of our family partnerships, those individuals who may have internet access issues or may not be able to sign in every day, or may be sick due to family concerns. Where we struggle a little bit, and this is where this position came in, if a student singly calls out sick and it just happens to be absent that day, and we don't have any prior information, and we don't have any current COVID information, we are asking our volunteers, these volunteers, to gather information about symptoms, call and check in on the kids, provide information on when they would return to school, and if there's testing necessary or as a possibility. And then when necessary, refer to the health staff for follow-up, and then certainly help from home, because that assists us with making those calls and not having issues with access to the building. And then the last piece is that it would require a confidentiality agreement as well.
And I'll jump in here, just to talk really briefly about the fact that we are working very closely with HR, communications, and as Margaret said, you know, all of our groups are sort of putting our arms around this and trying to get everything together and out. We did launch a promotional campaign earlier this week. We were able to get a great story from Nine News yesterday. Additionally, we have sent out the flyers and information to Boulder Chamber, posted on our website, and are providing it widely on social media and other avenues, so we can get out the word and hopefully recruit as many people as possible. So just wanted to put that out there. And then I'm going to hand it off to Rob Price to talk about the next part.
Is Rob on the call?
He was.
Okay, I'll jump in.
I'm sorry, no, no.
Oh, there he is, okay.
Yeah, apologize, Margaret, I lost my, sorry about that. To highlight some of the additional safety precautions we'll be implementing in January, we are in the process of purchasing HEPA air purifiers, they're also known as air cleaners for cafeterias and elementary school classrooms. So just another strategy to reduce the droplets that may be in the air. We are working on a plan to have them in place by the first week in January. Just a good reminder that we're not relying solely on one strategy. These, along with our other best practices, increased ventilation, mask-wearing, cleaning, we have in place is to reduce the possibility of transmitting the virus. We are also in a good position to supply KN95 masks to all of our school staff if the state doesn't continue to provide them to school districts. This is important not only to keep our staff safe, but also the new quarantine guidance won't exclude staff if they're wearing a K95 and a face shield, and they maintain six foot of social distance from identified case. And then, as you know, we've been increasing support for our health services staff to keep up with contact tracing. This became very problematic for us right before the Thanksgiving break. And as some of our health departments have mentioned tonight, trying to keep up with them has been a challenge, and I think that's what Margaret has hit on. If you have an opportunity to volunteer, please do so to help us with this process. Next slide. Reminder that free COVID-19 testing is available through COVID Check Colorado, and also at several community testing sites for anyone who would like to be tested. So COVID Check has locations in Westminster and Longmont, and then additional sites can be found at Boulder and Broomfield County websites. So we are also exploring additional testing options with COVID Check, just so that testing isn't a barrier for students and staff. So we hope to have additional information that we can communicate by the end of December. With that, I am going to turn it over to Dr. Anderson. With that, I am going to turn it over to Dr. Anderson.
Board members, thank you, Rob. So as you can see, we're continuing to do everything that we can to create the safest environment possible, so we'll be able to return to in-person learning. Right now, as it stands, classes are scheduled to resume January 5th, to the extent to where we know whether or not the cases will allow us to come back in-person or stay remote. We are waiting, over the course of this week, to see, as both Dr. Urbina and staff from Broomfield County Health have talked about, we want to see what happens in regards to the surge in cases related to the holidays. We feel like that potentially a similar surge could happen after the winter break, and so we're waiting to see what happens there before we would make a decision on what's going to happen the week of January 5th. We plan on making that decision sometime next week. We will make sure that we provide that information to all of our families. One of the challenges around communicating is after folks leave for winter break, there's not much time between winter break and then coming back to be able to communicate, so we're hoping to have some good, solid information to make a decision, at least for that first week before we leave for winter break. And as much as we're trying to look forward, as much as we are trying to think creatively, things are changing constantly within this pandemic, and so as those things do change, we do continue to commit to communicate. Before we open it up for questions, want to thank our health partners, both Boulder County Public Health, Broomfield Health have been credible partners guiding us, directing us as we've made these really difficult decisions. And so with that, I would open the floor, I turn it over to you, Tina, to open the floor for questions.
Okay. So I can see all the board members on Zoom, so although I can do, is it easier just for me to go alphabetical today? Richard, why don't you start?
Thank you, Tina. I only have a couple of questions. One is regarding the classroom monitors, is that what we're calling them? I believe I read someplace in the VSD website where they announced that, that they, part of the qualifications to be a classroom monitor was for them to be able to speak English. And since we have a lot of schoo-, well, not a lot, we have some schools that have a high impact of English language learners that their kids are learning in Spanish, are we going to have any classroom monitors that are bilingual? Is that one of the goals that we're looking at in terms of hiring? And would it be possible that if you can't find bilingual monitors, to go ahead and hire Spanish monolinguals or Spanish dominant monitors to be able to at least work with the Latino, Spanish-speaking students? I know you're looking at five classroom monitors per school. So that's quite a lot of classroom monitors if you're doing five per school. So that's the question that I have, is that are we going to be flexible enough to be able to do that? I had another comment, but I spaced that one out for now, but anyway, that's the, that's the one I have for now.
I'll turn to Mike Rados. Mike, if you'd like to answer that, I think that, you know, at this point, Richard, at least from my perspective, we're trying to find everybody and anybody who's able to help us as we think about the challenges that we potentially can predict with staffing, even as cases go down in regards to quarantining. But I'll let Mike answer the specific questions around the job posting.
Thanks for your question, Richard, and the answer is yes, we will hire as many as we can in terms of bilingual, if they're bilingual or monolingual. And here's the key, I know we said five per school, this is an opportunity for some of the parents within the community who want to work in the school, who would be bilingual, could go back and actually work and with our children and with our staff to make that happen. So that will not be a limit at all. That's not something that we'll do. We'll definitely hire bilingual and monolingual. Monolingual, Spanish-speaking parents can work with the English, with or with the teacher online, and I think that's feasible to do. So answer your question, yes, we will hire them.
Richard, did your other comment come to mind? I'll keep, I can't, well, you're unmute.
Yeah, it'll come, it'll come, Tina, but if you don't mind, let me think about that and then I'll come back.
Okay. Kathy?
So I think maybe it was Heather or Dr. or Helene or Dr. Urbina mentioned that we have new quarantine requirements. I was wondering if you could just run through how those are different from the ones before? It has to do with masks and face shields and distance and seating charts and all of that kind of stuff, is that right?
Let me try to tackle that one, Helene, first, and then join in, please, if I miss anything. I think that's a great question. The new quarantine guidelines that we just heard about this week are about reducing the amount of time that people remain in quarantine, from 14 days to 10 days and then seven. Where now each of us in our local health departments are looking at this very closely to see how this might apply to schools. So there's not a definitive answer, but the CDC has made some early recommendations that the quarantine of 14 days had increased, had a significant burden on businesses, and so they had some new recommendations coming out. Still, the goal standard is 14 days, and so, because we know that up to 14 days, people can still spread, develop the infection and still spread the infection. And under certain conditions, we're talking about how we might reduce that to 10 days, but still monitoring for symptoms if somebody becomes symptomatic, if they're asymptomatic during that quarantine period. And then down to seven days, in very, very few situations where people can get testing. So we're looking at that closely now, and so you're going to hear more about those quarantine recommendations going forward. But still, the same things apply, whether or not you're in quarantine or out of, or in our community, we still want people to mask up, we still want people to be washing their hands, avoiding social gatherings, physical distancing. And I think the schools, and particularly Rob and his team, have done an excellent job of providing mechanical ventilation and requirements. I think we're also going to be talking about targeted contact tracing in quarantine as we go forward as well, and how that impacts the schools. So more to come on that, but I think that's where we are. Helene, did I miss anything?
Taylor is on too, so Taylor, I don't know if you want to jump in too. We both work really closely together in terms of with the schools and in terms of targeted quarantine and when and if that is appropriate or not. And so that might have been a part of what you were alluding to in terms of where we look to see, you know, are masks being worn, what is the seating chart, what is the distancing? So there's a lot of factors that go into that, and especially for the younger age kiddos, it's just not as appropriate, there's more mobility happening, so that targeted quarantine is not necessarily an option, whereas then we would quarantine the whole classroom. And, you know, just as Dr. Urbina said, we're still waiting for some additional language from the state health department, but there's been a pretty, pretty strong emphasis on that the 14-day quarantine is still that goal standard, but that the 10-day is definitely something that we can work with in most situations. But otherwise, beyond that, there's a lot of other criteria that goes into part. And Taylor, I don't know if you want to add anything more?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Taylor Cronkis, Boulder County Public Health as well. And just adding, as Helene talked about, targeted contact tracing, your question involved some of that. The pieces about the masks and the face shields are part of the new CPHG guidance that just came out in this last week, that allows an option for teachers and school district staff who are wearing a KN-95 or higher graded mask, along with eye protection, particularly face shield or goggles, to have more options to stay in the classroom in that targeted contact tracing model. So that's where you might have heard the reference to the face masks, face shields and masks.
Is that it, Kathy?
No. Rob, do we have face shields for staff that want them?
Rob Price, we do, to the extent that we have, yeah. You two want to?
Yeah. Kathy, we, yes, we have provided face shields to every staff member in the district.
I just have kind of a, I don't, I should probably know the answer to this, but I can't, I don't know that I do. So as we start to have people vaccinated, are they then free from wearing masks and being socially distanced, or, I mean, how are we going to monitor that, and just wondering what that looks like?
Sure. If you don't mind, I'd like to tackle this question as well. Thank you, that's a great question. This is one of the unknowns about the vaccine rollout. As you know, the FDA is going to be approving both the Pfizer this week, as Helene alluded to, and the Moderna vaccine next week. So as we roll out these vaccines, the clinical trials show that, that the vaccine is highly safe, is very safe, and it's highly effective after getting two doses. So in this interim period of time, we are still going to recommend that people wear their masks, the physical distancing, do all the things that we're doing in terms of prevention, until we can start to build up a greater amount of immunity in the community. So I know that sounds clever, immunity in the community, but that's really where we're going, and it's going to be months before we actually get the vaccine to all people. So it's, so that, as we talked about earlier, that rollout is going to be about those folks in hospitals, healthcare workers, long-term care facilities. Then it'll be moving to first responders and police and public health workers, people that are working with infectious agents. Later on, as we go down the priority list, will be teachers. Right now, the vaccine is not approved for young people under the age of 18. So we're still struggling with this as we roll out the vaccine. Most people, if you look at the national news as well as look at the rollout, we anticipate that by next summer, everybody will have access to the vaccine. So during that period of time, we're not going to let down our guard, because, one, we still think there's going to be a certain amount of people that won't take the vaccine, so they're going to still be spreading the infection. And, two, because the vaccines are new, we certainly aren't sure how long the immunity is going to last, and we won't know that for a while. So all those questions are still out there. So we're not going to stop doing all the precautions, but we're hopefully, as we increase the amount of immunity through the vaccine, we will have less infection and therefore keeping our schools safer and all of our kids and teachers who don't elect to get the vaccine safe, and particularly our kids who won't have access to the vaccine. Anything to add, Taylor or Helene, that I missed?
So one last question, thank you, Dr. Urbina, it's just great to get these questions answered. So, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought there. That's not me. Tina, I have to think of my questions, I was so engaged in thinking about how we were going to be do-, oh, I know what it is. So, you know, we've kind of been each district for themselves and coming up with their own health requirements and their own health standards. Are we going to follow the state when it comes to who gets vaccinated, or is each county and each community going to be figuring it out? I just worry about some kind of standardization around that so that people have some predictability.
You're exactly right, Kathy, and we are following both the recommendations of the ACIP and the FDA at the federal level that are going to be adopted by the states. Generally, when the council and intervention immunizations practices meet, that's the ACIP, that we follow their recommendations, we usually don't digress from them. So the priorities, the folks at the vaccine, how it's going to be distributed, who's going to get it first, will be followed at a national level. So then, what the challenge will be is as we, as the vaccines in small amounts, as Helene alluded to earlier, is being rolled out, we might have to prioritize groups within those priority groups first, so that ultimately the entire phase will be covered, but it may take a little while depending on how that vaccine is rolled out. So those are great questions, but we're trying to, we're working very hard to standardize that. I know Helene and her team and the team in Boulder have been working very hard to make sure we have all the ducks in a row, basically, to receive it when we receive it, and then prioritize and sub-prioritize those populations.
All right, thank you. It's just, thank you so much for taking the time and for educating all of us, it's just immensely helpful. Thank you so much.
Okay. Donna, any questions? I'll get back to Richard then.
Yeah, thank, just, this is, I remember what it was. When, Dr. Anderson, when you mentioned that, or was it Margaret that mentioned that schools will be going back in January in-person, and my question was, all grade levels are going to be going back in January?
So all grade levels, everybody will start school January 5th. I think what we still have to determine, and have yet to determine, is to what extent are students going to be learning remotely or students going to be learning in-person? I think that, you know, in consultation with our, with our health, health partners, we want to wait this week to see what happens with this spike. And if you looked at the data that Dr. Urbina shared, what you're seeing is a little bit up, little bit down, little bit up, little bit down, but more of a flat, kind of a plateau in regards to the five-day, five-day or seven-day rolling average of cases per 100,000. Now, we want to make sure, and what we want to learn from is to see to what extent does that spike back up? Because we can predict, you know, just as we've seen, every time we've taken a break, we've seen spikes in cases. And so I do think that we're going to want to watch that, we're going to want to see what comes out of the governor's task force, we're going to want to see and know and understand the recommendations in regards to quarantining, to be making a recommendation on whether remote or in-person that first week, and we'll be making that call towards the end of next week.
Thanks.
Tina, Kathy, one more question. So Rob, when will you be making the call around sports? Winter sports, same timeframe?
Yeah, I believe all of that, we would try to communicate just once and not try to piecemeal that out. I do know that CHSAA came out today and delayed, I believe, winter sports a week, at least that first week, from my understanding. Stacy's shaking her head, so it's longer than the first week. Margaret, do you want to kind of give an update on that? Hopefully, if not board members, I can certainly follow up with you on the specifics. I do know that the Colorado High School Athletic Association has made a recommendation this week. Margaret?
Yes, they have made a recommendation this week. We'll have more information coming out as we move through the next few days. We're working with our local athletic directors throughout the region to make sure that we're all aligning in what we're doing moving forward.
I think they were looking at the beginning of February as an earliest, but I know that everything in COVID changes, but I believe that's what I had heard.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. Donna?
Yeah, I thank you, Helene, that last statement is so impactful. Everything changes, it is changing constantly. We're getting new guidance changes, there's so many unknowns, and I really want to advocate, our kids need to be back in school, there's so many social impacts, there's so many academic impacts. I talk to teachers weekly that are talking about kids that are failing. I'm concerned about that application process for our monitors. In my mind, maybe someone can explain it more clearly, but monitors almost seem like the SAT and PSAT proctors, where they're there to not necessarily help with any lessons or guidance in, in learning, but rather to make sure rules are being followed. The application process, I talked directly to a person today that logged on and was going to apply, but said it is so tedious, that the need for transcripts, the need for documents that are hard to acquire right now during times when staff at various places where they're asking for, we want your transcripts, we're going to take the fingerprint. I get it, I've gone through all of that, I've had to do it myself, but it's time-consuming. I don't think we have the time, January 5th, to get five monitors per school. I know I'm talking fast and I'm rattling on because I don't want to, I want to be able to have this meeting be as short as possible, but the monitors, it just seems to be a lofty goal to get that five per school by January 5th, knowing that all the limitations and the application process that they have to go through. I just want to put that out there and really advocate for our kid, we need to do something for these struggling kids and all the kids that are failing. Thanks.
You know, Mike, if you want to talk a little bit about the process and to the extent that there are things that we can streamline that, this may be a lofty goal, Donna, for certain, but, you know, just to be clear, this isn't just for January 5th, we're going to need, I believe that we would want to have the, have the, have the level of preparation- have the level of preparation, preparation for these folks to help us the entire semester. I know, so to the extent that we can, we can, we can reach our goal by January 5th, that's my hope. You know, I think that, you know, we can, we can continue to work at it. And certainly, Donna, we all want to get our kids back in person. We know that that's important. I think that, that, you know, some of the things that we're trying to do, whether it's additional filtering in classrooms, health monitors, classroom monitors, we're trying to do everything that we can to create the conditions so when we get, we get back to school that we could stay and that we're not going in and out and we're not, you know, this huge disruption of quarantining and schools barely hanging on by the seat of their pants because everybody's not only teaching, they're covering classes, you know, that, that's, you know, we, that's not the experience we want our kids to have, our teachers to have, our parents to have. So, you know, all of these efforts are trying to be geared towards improving that. Mike, you want to talk a little bit about the application process?
Yes. Donna, those have been waived, so we're not asking for that. We know that that's in the application process for a lot of our other jobs. But for that job, we're not. So they can, all they have to do is fill out the application. Then they will be called, they will be placed in a pool. They'll be asked three questions through a screener and then the training for those, for those individuals will start. They'll have training and management. And they will be helping with somewhat instruction and a little tutorial, things of that sort. They'll also be trained on the technology so that they can get, the kids can help the kids get online, watching their teacher online. So there's a lot in there, but those have been waived. We have not, we're not asking for those. And we do have about 20, 25 individuals right now in the pool.
Thank you, Mike, for clarifying that because I had someone call me today directly talking about the application process. And they went online and just exited because they said, "I can't do all this." So thank you for clarifying.
You bet. And if you get any more of those, any of the board members, please have them call me or email me and I'll get that expedited for them.
One quick question. If a person is already qualified as a sub, can they, can they enter either position? Say they're not given a sub job that day, can they be a monitor that day?
Absolutely. Yes.
Donna, any other questions?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Kitty?
Okay. I have a couple of questions. One for Helene and Dr. Urbina, whoever wants to answer it. So the number of vaccines was 47,000. And is that the number of individual doses? Or does that mean 47,000 people can get vaccinated? Because that's a big difference if we have 47,000 or 23,500 who can get vaccinated. So that's my first question.
Go ahead, Helene.
That's the expected rollout for the first shipment, so they're counting that as individual people. That it's going to be, that's allocated across the whole state with some hub areas in terms of prioritizing the healthcare workers. So there will be a follow-up shipment that will kind of complete that second round of dose, second, that second dose that would be needed. So that's, that's the target, that's the expectation.
Okay, good. Thank you. That, that's good to know because 23,000 just doesn't sound like, well, 47 doesn't sound like a whole lot, but better than 23. And Dr. Urbina, you answered one of my questions about immunity and how long it lasts. So they really don't have any idea right now? You're muted.
Sure. In the clinical trials, Kitty, they, they've shown a very good effect, at least after the, at least the Pfizer vaccine, that 50% people have produced after the first vaccine some evidence of immunity. And with the second dose, 95% have produced some level of immunity. The question really is, we don't know how long that immunity lasts. And I see that's part of the challenge, as I mentioned to Kathy earlier. We don't know how long the natural immunity lasts. So I think, so those are still unknowns and we're going to be watching this very carefully. But it's still valuable to have some immunity and protection. The other nuance, and it's very subtle, is that it's possible that, and more likely that the vaccines, the, at least the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines, will prevent severe infections. And you may still get infected with a small amount and still potentially not have full immunity, but it'll prevent, prevent the severe infections. But we're going, learning, as we've talked about multiple times on these phone calls, we're learning every day about the COVID national history and we'll learn the same thing about the vaccine as we go through. But it's still a good idea to take the vaccine.
Oh, I completely agree. I mean, I'll be in line as soon as, you know, it's my turn. Another thing that just really stood out for me was then the 1,200-plus out of 100,000 15 to 17-year-olds who were tested positive. That seems huge compared to, I mean, we were talking about 600 and some in the county and that that's not good, but it's almost twice that rate among those teenage kids. Is, do we know why that is?
Helene, I think that's a question for you.
Was that from my slide that you're referring to?
I thought it was Dr. Urbina's slide. And maybe I misunderstood it, and I hope so. But it had age groups of, and then, you know, how many per 100,000 were positive?
Gotcha. I think that might, it might have blurred. We pull out so many different data. I think it was from my slides. And so that 12 that you're thinking of was percent. So 12% of our, 12% of all of our cases in November were, were that age group. So it was not, it was not the same as the saying that they have, the case incidence is our whole, our two-week, two-week stint of like what our cases look like for 100,000 is 612. But the age group one that was a bar graph, that was, that was just breaking down, of 100% of our cases, about 12% of our cases are in that age group, that middle school, elementary, high school age group.
Well, I thought, what I, what I think I'm remembering is a slide that was comparing, you know, the current two-week incidence and then the previous two-week incidence and the previous one. And I think it was Boulder County, it was like 1,200 and some, not percent, per 100,000. And now it's improved to 800 and some per 100,000 for teenagers. Did I misremember that?
I think that is Boulder. Dr. Urbina, you're still muted.
Can you, can you pull up that slide, Randy? But I think the issue is, Kitty, the challenge is when we're sharing different data, sometimes that, that number is per 100,000. So it's not the total number of cases.
No, I got that.
But 100,000 teenagers, that number is relatively small. But what I tried to do in that slide is compare the rates previously two weeks before that and then the two weeks currently now. And we saw a drop in that incidence rate between those two populations over that period of time.
You're right. I was just concerned that it was so much higher in that particular age group, you know, in the prior two weeks, not the, you know what I mean, the four weeks.
Well, this is the challenge that we see. And Helene and I both alluded to this earlier, is that in that group, there's lots of mixing, isn't there? Social events outside the classroom, going to the mall, social gatherings, sports, all of those social activities led to a much greater number of contacts in that old, in the middle school and high school numbers. So I think that's, that was a trend that we've seen in both counties. Now, as you get younger and younger, where we have more control over those populations and there isn't as much mixing, so we see the lower rates in those younger age groups. I hope that's helpful.
It is helpful. It just, in terms of going back to school, that just really caught my eye because, you know, my understanding of what we're learning about transmissibility is that once you get to be teenagers, it, the transmissibility is about the same as adults. But, you know, younger kids, it's much less. And I just don't want to see so many of our teenagers being sick.
I couldn't agree with you anymore. And let's get them to mask up and be physical distancing and washing their hands and not congregating. And if we can do that, we will, we will reduce the rate in those teenagers. Thank you for that encouragement, so.
Well, and thank you so much, Dr. Urbina. Like Kathy said, this really is helpful to get this information.
To tailgate on Kitty's response, can I ask real quickly? I have heard from someone directly that if, if a student is tested twice within a certain period of time, each test is counted as an individual, not as one test. So that person might test positive and a week later, they want to go back again, get another test that's positive. That would be two individuals, not just one. Is that correct?
Helene, can you take that, please?
Yeah, it shouldn't be that way because when we look at our state, state database, which we call seaters, that tracks individually. If there's any duplication, we delete the case. So we wouldn't count it twice. It wouldn't be counted twice in terms of number of cases. That, that would not be correct.
Thank you for that answer. I heard that directly from a couple of CU students and, and so I, I took it as fact. I don't know whether it is, I'm just trying to check. Thank you.
Yeah. And we, and we sometimes see people that like seek out testing in multiple locations. And sometimes they want to, you know, do a rapid test and a PCR test and different things. And so we definitely look for any duplication. And we've tried to keep the, the numbers at the state level and the local level as accurate as possible. So that, that definitely would be deleted.
If I can add to that, Donna, as well, we discourage people from getting retested. And because you can be tested up to, positive up to 90 days following that first infection. So we don't want to have people wasting those resources. Now, what we do see a lot of, unfortunately, is people say, "Well, I didn't believe that first test." And so we want to discourage that from happening because it's a waste of resources. And once they get a positive test, they're a case. And we want them to isolate, not get another test.
Okay. Lisa?
Questions about the classroom monitors? Do we imagine that those would work for our lower elementary grades as well? And if so, would those monitors have any specialized training or have a different ratio of monitor to student?
So I believe that, you know, the, the original idea was for all teachers, classroom monitors working now. If there's a classroom, if there's that where kids have, have, have different needs, say some with, with some of our younger kids, schools may try to shift resources around and leverage that classroom monitor in a later, like an older grade, like fourth, fifth, and maybe switch somebody down to cover that class if that feels like that's a need. I don't know that we've differentiated the training, though, for classroom monitors for any level or grade. Mike, is that correct?
Yes. Yes, that is correct. Yeah.
Sorry, maybe, maybe I wasn't clear. What I mean is, do we imagine that our lower elementary school grades would ever be in a position of having a teacher teaching remotely with just a classroom monitor in the room?
Yes, we've actually, I can answer that. So we actually have had situations where the teacher has been quarantined and we've had someone covering the class as a supervisor of that class while the teacher is teaching remotely from their location. And thanks to our incredible professional learning department, they're working on a really comprehensive way that we use similar to our, for our substitute teachers and new teachers to get the technology training as well as some of the other components around how to support students in instructional situations.
Okay, thank you. And then just one more. Are, are families going to be notified in advance before they go into a classroom that has a monitor and a remote teacher instead of a live teacher and then given the option to keep their kids at home until the teacher returns?
So typically, what we've done before is as, as we, if a teacher's impacted, the principal's notifying the classroom that the teacher's out when available. I mean, sometimes it's early in the morning. And we try, what we try to do is continue the education system. So it's very similar to, in some cases, our parents may be covering or we may have someone in the classroom. It's a similar situation with just essentially less experience in terms of time in a classroom. And we have not specifically notified when that happens because sometimes it could happen during the day if the teacher becomes ill or it could be on short notice. And we wouldn't want to disrupt our families. And obviously, they're BVSD, would be BVSD employees as they are in our cases now. So certainly can cover the classroom space for the supervision component.
Okay, thank you. I would just imagine that for some of our families, that knowing that they were going to have a remote teacher might change their risk tolerance of wanting to send their, their kids to school, whether or not that it's still worth it.
Is that it, Lisa? Okay. Stacy?
So I don't have any questions that haven't already been answered, but I'll answer Kathy's really quick about winter sports. So Season B, which is the traditional winter sports, they are proposing to start practices January 25th with games starting February 1st going to March 20th. But they're not going to revisit that again until mid-January to confirm that. So it's just a proposal at this time. That's all.
Thanks, Stacy. I have a couple of questions. One is, are we thinking about changing our masking guidance for students to restrict them to masks? Or are we going to continue to keep it open to gaiters and bandanas?
I don't know that, that we've, we've had that discussion up to this point. I mean, I think there's been discussions, but I don't think that there has been the guidance that we need to move forward and change that at this point. But we'll continue to engage with, with our health, health partners, health experts and if they advise us in, to move in that direction, that's something we'll consider.
Okay. And then the other pieces I noticed on our reentry plan or our next new reentry plan, that we're looking at getting HEPA filters for elementary schools, but we didn't mention secondary schools. Is that something we're also going to be looking into? Or, and if not, why aren't we also looking at secondary schools?
I would say the thinking at this point, Tina, was to start with the elementary schools. Let's, let's, let's get those in place. We know that with our reintroduction plan, that our elementary kids have been going in four days a week and that we have been maintaining the three-feet versus the six-feet social distancing with, with implementing a hybrid at middle and high based on the Phase 2 plus working recommendations, or working group recommendations. And so that's why we started with elementary schools. Pretty significant investment. And we feel like we're going to start there. Right now, in hybrid, we're in middle and high, we're able to maintain that six-feet social distancing.
Okay. Just one thing to think about is our community is often willing to help us out. So if we find that one of the challenges for HEPA or air cleaners in secondary schools is monetary, I hope that we feel comfortable reaching out to our community looking for donations on that, if that's going to be something that moves us to in-person learning. And then my last thing is more of a vaccination strategy when we think about the inequities of vaccines. Will there be any prioritization for our populations that seem to be disproportionately affected by COVID? You know, just for instance, will be, will we be waiting more vaccine toward Longmont and perhaps Boulder because they have higher rates of infection? And that was a Dr. Urbina question, I think, or Helene or Taylor.
Sure. Happy to tackle that one. I'd be curious, so Helene and Taylor also comment on this. Our priority has always been to try to reach the populations that are most vulnerable. And that has been true in Boulder County and I know in Broomfield as well, where we've tried to do testing so that people have access to that in Longmont and in other communities. We also, both Helene, both in Broomfield and in Boulder, we've tried to have messages out there that encourage folks, in our particular, our Latino, Latino populations, that we want them to get tested. Hopefully, as the vaccine is going to be more available, we'll also target essential workers working in, in facilities that we know that many of our communities of color are working in those essential practices. So we'll be targeting vaccines to those populations and hopefully make it readily available in those communities. I know that's a big commitment to, in Boulder. And I, and I would assume that it's also a big commitment in Broomfield as well to try to make that difference. Right now, the, the populations of, the number of vaccines that we have now is very small. But as we roll it out, we're going to be trying to make that. But the most important thing that maybe people haven't asked is about vaccine uptake. We, we know that our, our communities of color are very cautious about getting vaccines and are also very cautious about the government giving them the vaccine. So, so that, that we're going to be doing lots of outreach in, in our communities of color, so making sure that we talk about the fears that they're modest, that, that, that people are having about the vaccine so that we can, we can say that, that the vaccine is both safe and effective and will have a greater uptake among those populations. and will have a greater uptake among those populations. Helene or Taylor, your thoughts?
I think that you hit it, and just a lot of it is just the rollout. We have so many unknowns right now. That's part of what's frustrating and the complexities of it. So we know that we'll be expecting more and more each week and we'll definitely work to kind of share information and educate all populations so that they feel confident in seeking out the vaccination.
Okay. Well, I just want to thank everyone so much. You know, we have some people waiting to have public participation, so I'd like us to move on now. But board members, if you have further questions, you can send an email to Rob and he can farm out that question to any of the people here who've been so helpful with all of their information. So if it's okay, can we move on to public participation now? Great. So we always invite public participation. It's obviously disappointing that we can't do it in person right now. We've asked people to sign up by noon of the day of the board meeting, which is today, by calling our board secretary, Laura Schaefer. You can find her number on bvsd.org/BoardofEducation. And we just ask you to keep your matters germane to the business of the school or the district. Your presentation is limited to two minutes and you'll know when it's ending by looking at the signs that Laura Schaefer will show. Yellow is when it's getting close. Orange, I think you have 10 seconds left, and red is time is up. And let's see. And that's about it. So we are going to start with our student speakers. And our student speakers are first Kennedy Nelson.
Hello, my name is Kennedy Nelson and I am a sophomore at Brumfield High School. Please let me go back to my classrooms on January 5th. I have not been able to see my classmates or school friends since March. That is almost eight months. I have never met my first quarter teachers and I have only been in class for two days this quarter. My friends and I want to be in school together in January. We are tired of staring at the computer screen. We want to see each other at lunch. We want to show our school spirit in person. We want to do labs in advanced biology class. We want what is right and that is being in school in January. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Juliana Perez. Juliana, you're on mute.
Sorry. Hi, I'm Juliana Perez. I'm a sophomore at Brumfield High School. And throughout these past couple of months, I have been super privileged to see things come from a different perspective. While sometimes students would dread coming to school and have a hard time, this online learning experience is stripping my education. Personally, I don't believe that learning is just a teacher displaying information on a computer screen or sending us into quote-unquote breakout rooms just to nobody to speak or even worse, nobody to even show up. I have realized the struggle that this learning causes, not only me, but my fellow students. Learning should be talking to your teachers in person, getting help as you need and being easily able to access it. Teachers should be able to walk around the classroom and see if students are understanding the content or not. I want to have these relationships with my students. I feel emotionally drained. I don't want to learn from my bed and I can't learn from my bed. I want to succeed in high school through this. And through this is not my education, what it's supposed to look like either. Brumfield High School is such a strong community. The reason I wanted to attend this school so much was because of my community and the aspect of this community that a lot of other schools don't have. Online learning is not a community anymore. As much as we try to make it one, this is a deconstructed version of our education. We, as students, have the right to attend school in person and it's so much more than just sitting in the classroom. It is truly what we deserve to be able to succeed as students. And this is what our teachers, parents, and peers want from us. Thank you.
Okay, Lilia Neal. And I'm sorry if I got that first name wrong.
Hi, I'm Lilia Neal and I'm a sophomore at Brumfield High School. And going into this, I thought it was going to be easy and I was going to be able to take the toll of it, but it's taken a big toll on my mental health. And I've gone through so many depressive states and it's not been good for my mental health and my friends. And I don't believe schooling should be done through a computer. I think that we should be in the classroom seeing our friends and teachers. And as a D1 athlete, this is really taking a toll on my future because I need to, one, be in the gym and getting my four-year letters and, two, not having these bad grades. And it's really affecting my future and it's not fair. Am I allowed to talk still? I just got muted. Sorry.
Yeah, why don't you just complete that thought?
Okay. I just got muted. But it's not fair how we're supposed to learn these subjects within eight weeks when we're supposed to be given 16 weeks. And it's really taking a toll on everybody's grades. And I would love to get back in class.
Okay, our next student speaker is Chloe Hiller.
Hi, my name is Chloe and I'm a student at Brumfield High School. I feel like you guys need to know how I feel and how other teens my age feel about not being in school. It's just so unfair. I see other kids my age go to school. For example, my friends at Holy Family who have been in school almost all year. My younger sister has also got to go to school a lot more than two days, like I did. I just feel so unmotivated and bored throughout my school week. It's so hard to focus in all of my classes. I have trouble finding a reason to get ready every day. So I find myself trying to make up reasons, but school was the main thing I got ready for and now I have to do nothing. I just feel really tired sometimes, even if I got enough sleep. School is harder too because we don't connect with our teachers. My teachers even told me that they are having a hard time because they cannot see what we are working on and they can barely see our faces. I never even met my teachers first semester and I thought that we might get to see them outside and meet them, but we never did. I see some kids on Zoom in their beds without their lights on and they are struggling to be productive. School is always something I've really enjoyed because I got to see my friends all day, every day, and now I'm just home by myself most of the time. I am lucky because I have sometimes get to go to Palms, but my friends who don't have any sports right now have nothing to look forward to. Sports for us is more than just something to do. It's a part of who we are and an outlet for us. A lot of kids' main source of socialization is at school and they don't see those friends outside of school. Without school, a lot of these friendships are sort of fading away. So now they aren't seeing anyone. It's really depressing. Everything feels terrible right now without school and we have nothing to look forward to. Please let us go back to school. Thank you for listening.
Emma Goldberg?
Hi, my name is Avery Goldberg and I'm a ninth grader at Brumfield High School. And I read this letter on behalf of my older sister and I and the rest of the students in BVSD. To whom it may concern, we must begin taking action and advocating for the students in BVSD. We speak on behalf of many BVSD students when we tell you that the online learning platform that is currently in use is not being beneficial to our education. We have always prioritized school. We have always done everything we can to make exceptional grades as well as make sure that we are getting the most out of the curriculum in our classes. Every day, the program we are currently learning from lessons the passion we students once had for school. We must begin to look at the bigger picture of what the COVID-19 pandemic is doing not only to our education system, but to our students. Virtual learning is completely unengaging and unmotivating and our fear is that we are not getting the proper curriculum that we will need in future classes and careers. Additionally, students do not have equal opportunity to be successful due to the countless variables taken into account with technological issues. Students are now doing their schoolwork through a lens of, I just have to get it done, instead of the growth mindset of wanting to learn and trying to absorb and fully understand the information taught to us in school that BVSD praises. You are underrating the importance of social aspects of in-person school. We are not able to make the connections we normally would be able to create in this online platform. We didn't realize how much our mental health relied on seeing friends and teachers in school until it was taken away. Students are truly struggling. Being kept at home is causing students to develop serious mental health issues that could affect us for the rest of our lives as we become adults in the new world. Please help us take the steps to get back into school before these consequences become irreversible. We write this letter not to degrade our school district for we are grateful for our access to education. We only ask that you please look at the situation with the benefit of the students in mind, take seriously the worsening situation at hand and get us back into school. Thank you for your careful consideration.
Okay, and I'll just interrupt. I forgot to read a comment at the beginning of public participation. Just to remind us that tonight's meeting will also serve as a public hearing for receiving comments on the school unified improvement plan that is on our agenda as a study item for this meeting. And that is for the Alicia Sanchez Improvement Plan. Okay? So just, and now we're going to go ahead with the rest of the speakers. And so first, now we're going back to agenda items. Number one is Ralph Free.
Good evening. And I'm here to share with you. If I can get my video on, I have some things to show you. You're about to hear what is going to be an exceptional UIP plan from Joel Rivera, the principal at Alicia Sanchez. And that particular plan is probably, at least from my perspective, the first fully compliant meets all the CDE recommendations and statutes and protocols.
I think we just lost, he was just muted by mistake.
Sorry, he said that he had something to show us so he needed to be a panelist. And then it looks like it disconnected him. Oh, here he is. Ralph, can you hear us?
I can.
One more time, Ralph.
You're going to hear a great plan.
Thank you.
You're going to hear a great plan from Joel Rivera. It is, to the best of my ability, to determine the first fully compliant to all CDE protocols requirements as set forth in their statutes. Now, this has not been an easy journey, so I'll take you in a minute and a half through the behind-the-scenes what it took to get here. So in late 2019, we were struggling at Alicia Sanchez. The progress was not being made. And so we built a UIP compliant turnaround binder for Alicia Sanchez. It took about 100 hours to pull it together, put all the data together, all the statutes, all the requirements from the CDE website. And then we began training our SAC parents. Most of the parents had never heard the word "performance framework", let alone see one or know how to read one. We got through that. We also began to have engagement with Joel and the full SAC team, which included the teachers. And I need to tell you that Joel hung in there for the difficult, the really difficult conversations that begin when parents come full circle and understand the full state of a turnaround status and how long it had been in that condition at Alicia Sanchez. Joel hung in there and built trusted relationships. We also added five Latino parents to the SAC that contributed to the data that Joel is going to present tonight from the TLCC that caused us to focus on the community engagement. Here's a short list of contributors. Robin Fernandez, Gerzon Kessler, Carl Sanchez, the counselor, Guillermo Medina, Samara Williams, Nicole Rajpal, and Lisa Medler from the CDE. So thank you for the time you gave me. It took a long time to get here, but you're going to hear a great plan.
Okay, our next speaker is Obdulia Escobedo.
Hello, my name is Obdulia Escobedo. I have two students at Sanchez. Elena from Pre-K in Pre-K and Tanya in fourth grade. This year, I joined the SAC committee and have been participating in making decisions for Alicia Sanchez. And I look forward to continuing to work with the SAC and contributing to the school in the future. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Blanca Valles?
Hello, my name is Blanca Valles. I am the mother of Nicole Valles in third grade at Alicia Sanchez. When we first joined Alicia Sanchez or came to Alicia Sanchez, I didn't know anything about how to register my student for school or anything about the school. And Fabi Gomez helped me learn about school registration and other parts of the school. Now, my daughter is in third grade and she has a spectacular teacher. And she's very happy. She also participates in an after-school program that provides reading tutoring and she's advancing a lot in reading. And I am very proud to be a parent at Alicia Sanchez. And my daughter is proud to be a student at Alicia Sanchez. Thank you very much. Gracias, Blanca.
Our next speaker is Jessica Gribble.
Hi, I'm Jessica Gribble. My son Benjamin is in Mrs. Kendrick's second-grade class at Sanchez. This is his sixth year at Sanchez, so we've been part of this school community for a long time. I serve on the PTA and also on the SAC committee. Benjamin has an IEP to address some developmental delays and I just can't say enough good things about all the specialists and teachers who've worked with him over these six years. I've noticed that during the implementation of our improvement plan, communication from the school has gotten stronger, much stronger. And there have been many opportunities for families to contribute ideas and share concerns. Even though we've gone back and forth this year between remote and in-person learning, the learning environment has remained positive at Sanchez and the school hasn't missed a beat in making sure that Benjamin's support structure has stayed in place during all the chaos and the implementation of this improvement plan. Thank you.
Okay, Nicole Johnson?
Good evening. My name is Nicole Johnson and I have a fourth grader at Alicia Sanchez International. I'm going to slightly change what I was going to say because some other people have already covered what I was going to say in some parts. The most important thing that I think I want to address tonight is that this year marks a milestone for our school when Joel Rivera returned as our principal for the 2020-2021 school year. This is my daughter's fifth year at Sanchez and her first four years, we had four different principals. So I feel like now that we have a bit of continuity and some consistency in the leadership roles, that hopefully this will help us as we move forward and propel to the other side of the turnaround status. I also want to say that speaking of the turnaround status, one of the biggest concerns that I currently have is related to remote learning and a lack of testing data. With no data last year and an almost certain lack of testing data this year, Sanchez is in a holding pattern. While I believe that we have made great strides towards progress for our UIP, which Joel is going to address, we don't have any data in terms of testing to confirm this. It's my sincere hope that BVSD will continue to give the school the full support it needs while we work on our UIP with the goal of progressing out of turnaround status in future years, even with a current lack of testing data to demonstrate any progress that we have made. I just want to say that the Sanchez community is amazing and that I'm really glad that we chose to open and roll our child there five years ago. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Michael Neal.
Am I there? Can you hear me now?
Mike, I can hear you.
Oh, perfect, okay, sorry. Um, uh, thank you so much, um, for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Michael Neal, um, father of three students at BVSD schools, um, one at Broomfield and two at Aspen Creek through eight. Um, it, it's been a trying year for us all, um, obviously, with what we're dealing with. But, I mean, from my perspective, what we're seeing in our students, um, the social isolation alone, um, has, has just taken a toll on our children. Um, the, the, someone said that, I, I read someone's comment once that said that the light that they want saw in their kid wasn't there anymore, and I'm, I'm starting to slowly see that within my own children. Um, sorry, I'm a little emotional. Seeing, um, my 10th grade daughter, who, uh, made varsity as a freshman, was an academic letter, um, struggle to even find joy in school, and she loves school. Um, seeing my eighth grader, who, eighth grade year is a great year, you're on top of the world in, in your junior high, um, you know, struggle to even get out of bed, to find the joy in, in getting out of bed. It doesn't help also that my two younger kids are, are brand new to BVSD school, so they're in a brand new school with brand new friends, and they can't meet anybody. Um, it has been an overwhelming year for them all. It's been difficult for my wife and I. Um, luckily, we own businesses, so we can be here some of the time, but when we're not here, the mental anguish that it causes my children, knowing that if there's a tech issue or if there's a problem, that they're relying on their, on their elder sister, or we have to rush home or ask a neighbor to come over. Um, it's just, it, it's, it's, it's unfortunate for them. Uh, additionally, the fact that other states' children are advancing above our own children right now. I've got gifted athletes that are taking time off, very important years off, um, while other states around us are not. So, i- it's gonna make it difficult for their futures, difficult for the choices they have to eventually make, um, because they will be behind. And, and, you know, other states aren't waiting for Colorado, they're not waiting for us to continue or to pick up, so that's been a challenge for us. I'm just, I, 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 I need our children to be back in school based off of, like, what Dr. Fauci has said, what Doc, what, what Polis has said with the CDC, with WHO. I know I heard something about a golden rule or a golden standard, but I mean, if we know some of the data that we're seeing, um, specifically, and I, I know we have lots of cases, we have lots of testing, so we have lots of cases. I, I don't think that's the reason to keep our children out of school and to jeopardize their futures any further. Um, their education cannot be a casualty of this pandemic any longer, and I hope to God that you hear the sincerity in my voice. Thank you so much.
Okay, our next speaker is Jane Cole.
I do not have Jane online.
Okay, then we will move on to Lisa Hall, who has given two minutes from Howe.
Howe has messaged him that she'd like to speak for herself now, so would Lisa go first and then Howe?
That's fine.
Yeah, so it's, uh, two minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. First of all, thank you to the high school kids who have spoken tonight. Your voices are so powerful and just bring tears to my eyes. I'm the mother of two boys who are 15 and 21. I wish they would have spoken. I've been a BVSD parent for 20 years, and I'm a marriage and family therapist. I've been practicing for nearly 25 years, specializing in teens and families. I'm up at night thinking about the teens in our school district, my own son included, but all of you out there, all of you high school kids. Just an hour ago, I spoke with my colleague, child psychiatrist Dr. Jill Vitus, who confirms teens are in an absolute crisis and must go back to school. Quote, "We are missing chunks of developmental time that they desperately need and can't get back. They are not like adults," end quote. Teens cannot sustain what you are asking them to do, as we've heard so eloquently from them. They need more now. We are failing high school children. It is just plain and simple, and you better expect that the suicide rate in our district will only continue to rise. I'm formally requesting a high school work group effective immediately with student involvement to generate a much more comprehensive and significant change for high school as soon as possible, regardless of whether we are in red and with or without teachers on campus teaching and with or without a vaccine coming. Our high school kids have been left behind with resources going to K to five. We just heard again from Rob that there is no plan for HEPA filters in high school. This inequity absolutely cannot continue. No to another staggered start with high school students last. No to one day a week of being in a classroom where our teenagers have headphones on and are looking at a computer screen.
Okay, our next speaker is Ashley Osborne. And just a reminder to keep your comments, two minutes, please.
Uh, we have Sean that was originally going to give the two minutes with the co- next.
Okay, that, uh, person's in a different place on my list, so we can go ahead and do that, though.
Thank you.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Oh, fantastic. So, um, I am a BVSD parent. I have two children, ages 13 and 15, and, um, first of all, thank you for all of your efforts during the pandemic. Um, I came to this meeting and I was angry, um, and I, I'm happy to say that I am more encouraged now, after I've listened to some of your plans. Um, you should know that part of the reason I was angry is because I think the communication of what you're doing has been quite poor. Your website is not updated, it looks as though your plans for September are just continuing despite changing data and change in circumstances. So, I, I think there's a lot of distrust in the community, given the history of starting, um, school in the fall only to realize that the rug was pulled out from underneath and, oh no, we don't have enough staff. So, um, I, I would ask that, that the board try to focus a little more on communicating all of these great efforts, um, because again, I, I feel more encouraged. Um, I, I'm a healthcare provider, and I left my job of 15 years to take care of my kids because they weren't in school. They're teenagers, and these people that are speaking are correct. There is increased social anxiety, there is depression, um, there is substance abuse, substance abuse. These teens are being left behind, um, and I would encourage you to focus on all the groups, not just K through five. Middle schoolers and teens need these things too, and, um, I am super encouraged to hear some of the board members mention reaching out to the community for resources. Yes, we would donate HEPA filters, you know? Please continue to reach out to the community, and, um, I, I think the other concern is that we depend on this vaccine. And as a healthcare worker, I saw exactly how long it took the government to be able to put a fancy piece of paper on my face. And I'm sorry, but I, I, that has jaded me. I am hopeful, but there might be problems rolling out this vaccine. It may take a year for this to affect our school community in any meaningful way, and I want to know that the school board is prepared for that and is still planning to be in a crisis situation and is not hanging their hat on this vaccine that, that may not affect us for quite some time. Thank you so much for all that you're doing, and, um, thanks for the time.
Ashley Osborne?
As a parent of a six-year-old and a 15-year-old, I'm very disappointed. BVSD seems to understand how impossible online learning is for my first grader, but continues to minimize the damage to my high schooler. I can't decide which is worse, my six-year-old crying and screaming that she hates school, or my teenager's sad silence, which is almost more deafening. Our teens are acutely aware they're being overlooked, and they need a date to return to school so they can keep hope. Numerous studies demonstrate negative effects of being out of school for all ages, including a widened achievement gap, mental health issues, and increases in violence and abuse. Teens are in crisis. Let's stop staying online school versus in-person school, because online is not school. We're losing a generation and doing them a huge disservice, and when they do reopen, enough with this hybrid idea, it didn't work. Targeted quarantine now allows staff and students to stay in school if there is an exposure, if exposed for less than 15 minutes and six feet apart, which eliminates quarantining entire classes and the hallway passing period concerns. The number of days for quarantine has decreased, and the capacity limits on classrooms has been removed. BVSD must acknowledge these new guidelines. We're not only behind other districts, but other states and countries. Florida's governor said closing schools was probably the biggest public health blunder in modern American history. New York City's data found that teachers and kids are less at risk of getting COVID in school than elsewhere. Nearly all other first-world countries have schools open. The United Nations stated children in schools are not the primary transformers of COVID to adults. The superintendent's survey showed early reading decline and middle and high school mental health as top concerns. One said unless we really intervene here, there will be significant long-term challenges. I keep hearing grades nine through 12 are highest risk, but it is essential to note that this data means highest under the age of 18, not highest among the general population. All grades need to be back in school, not in three months, not in a staggered start, and not one day a week in January, all of them. I'm pleading with you to hear us. Thank you.
Steph Fries or Fresz? I'm sorry if I got that wrong.
I do not have Steph online, but I do have an 819 number, and I'm not sure who that is. Is that you, Steph? That number is not responding.
I will move on, and if they come back, we can go back. Uh, Christopher Goldberg?
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, uh, thanks. Uh, my, my name is Chris Goldberg. I have a senior and a freshman at Broomfield High, and a sixth grader and a second grader at Aspen Creek. I'm a member of the Boulder Valley Educational Advocates. Uh, my daughters are the third generation of my family to attend Broomfield Schools, and I moved them back here because I believed in the mission statement of BVSD, uh, because it's student-focused. In my 10 years as an Army officer, we have a saying that kicked us focused on during difficult times. Mission first, people always. Saying that brings our focus back to what really matters. In the case of BVSD, that should be the children, all the children, at all levels. But unfortunately, that, that's not what's happening. I get to hear on a daily basis from my straight A secondary students, "Dad, we're learning absolutely nothing. This is worthless." I listen and say, "This quarter system is a total waste of my education." And when we returned 100% remote, I got to lay on the floor with a crying seven-year-old and try to answer the question, "Daddy, why are they doing this? None of us are sick, we're all fine, why can't we go to school?" The only answer I can provide them is because they've lost their focus, sweet girl, and what they're doing is different than what, than what they're saying. We have to understand the impact you're having on children with the decisions you're making. For my children, their sports, their peers in school, their communities are what they turn to as a crucial part of their support system when their mom died. My girls are grieving that loss every single day while they watch their school district deny access to key support systems while their friends right down the street get to go to school. You have to understand that making excuses about public health orders being the barrier while we watch other districts and private schools provide in-person learning at all levels makes absolutely no sense. You have to understand that making staffing excuses just makes it look like you aren't following the latest guidance and exemptions and quarantine from public health organizations. I'm losing faith in the district, district I grew up in, and I fear that, just like your decision to remove SROs from schools, you've already made up your minds. I expect that I'll get the same precanned response I've received from numerous emails and communications from this district to date. I fully expect that the board will continue to look at parent advocacy as adversarial instead of partners in the mission. So, the challenge I lay before the superintendent and the board is prove me wrong with actions, not words. Find a way to lead, and know you'll have the full support of the community if you do right by children and get them back in their schools and sports. I hope you do, and I'll happily explain to a second grader, "Daddy was wrong, baby girl." They were able to learn what it means to say, "Mission first, people always." Appreciate your time, thank you.
Kristin Stodden?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, my name is Kristin Stodden. I'm a parent of a senior and a sophomore at Broomfield High School and a member of Boulder Valley Educational Advocates. For parents listening, you can find us on Facebook. Our kids are drowning in isolation and lack of education, but instead of throwing them a life preserver, it feels like you keep handing them bricks. These are the people we love most in the world. I know most of you are parents and understand fighting for the well-being of your children. It feels like many adults are hiding behind a theme of resiliency in children and teens this year because they don't feel comfortable, oh, sorry, so that they don't feel comfortable taking away so many things that are essential for our teens. When many of us, our parent, many of us parents are watching our kids, especially our teens, suffer from anxiety, depression, and at worst, the ultimate loss of hope that has taken the lives of teens in our districts, we do not feel resiliency is enough to counteract what our kids are losing. So many parents have been reaching out to you because we feel unrepresented and unheard. Feelings that your lack of response make worse. You have broken the bridge of communication and trust so many of us valued prior to this in our district. Many of us moved here or chose to enroll our kids because of your former reputation for leadership, innovation, and quality of service. This year, we feel betrayed that you have, uh, taken our most basic, basic trust in you, the belief that you would, the belief that you would always put our kids first. Finally, we would like to know what are you doing to support our class of 2021? How are you making them feel like this is their senior year? There are no do-overs, yet they seem invisible to you. Watching our seniors suffer through online school and isolation while they lose everything that makes senior year celebratory, memorable, and the capstone of their childhood and education is devastating. You put them and all our high schoolers last in every consideration. While surrounding districts gave their high schoolers two days in person, you slapped ours in the face with one day a week. The class of 2021 needs you to remember in your every decision that affects high school students, they have lost so much of what senior year should be, and they deserve the best year you can possibly give them moving forward. We all know if we think something is vitally important and we truly value it, we find a way to make it happen. We need you to find a way to care for and educate our kids better second semester by offering the choice of in-person learning, multiple days a week, at the minimum, for every single grade level in BVSD. Um, I also wanted to say a comment from a friend who wasn't able to talk, that other districts, like DPS, plan to have all their kids who opt for in-person in schools by February 1st. We must be more equitable with other districts for the benefit of our kids. Thank you.
Ann Gibson?
My name is Ann Gibson, and I've been a teacher in BVSD for 16 years at Douglas Elementary. I also have two sons in the district, one in third and one in ninth grade. As both a parent and a teacher, I am firmly in support of getting students at all grade levels back to school in person. Despite my best efforts as a teacher and those of my fellow teachers, the effects of 100% online school are beyond deleterious. In addition to the plummeting mental health of students, the learning that is taking place is abysmal. About a quarter of my students do not show up for our live sessions. When they do show up, many have their cameras off. About half of my students aren't doing the assignments. When they do, the quality of work is often below grade level. Failing grades are also rampant at the secondary level. We teachers have never worked so hard for so little return on the part of students' learning. After returning to in-person school in October, my class had to quarantine twice, once for a negative case and once for a positive case. In both situations, we were 100% masked, and the majority of us were not within six feet of the affected student for any length of time, but two classrooms worth of teachers and students were sent home. Ultimately, there was zero transmission. However, my total in-person time with students this year has been just eight days. BVSD is a leader among school districts and should act accordingly. Listen to the scientists in our community and across the nation at the most preeminent institutions. Look at the data from schools that have been open this whole time. Multiple sources have found that less than 1% of students and staff, actually hundreds of a percent, have tested positive in schools that have reopened in the US. Please listen to the science and prioritize in-person school for all students as soon as possible. We have to do everything we can to mitigate the negative consequences of the past nine months, and it's in your hands to turn things around. Thank you.
Julia Cook?
Hi, I'm a member of the Boulder Valley Educational Advocates, but most importantly, I'm also a BVSD employee. I'm a health repair at my kiddo school. I come to you today as a frustrated, scared, and struggling parent of a third grader and fifth grader. My husband and I have watched the mental health of my fifth-grade son decline greatly. What was once a thriving, energetic fifth grader who loved learning is now a child who is having a hard time following an online curriculum and is not motivated. He comes alive when he is in a face-to-face setting versus staring at a screen for numerous hours- for numerous hours a day. I have seen both of my kiddos getting distracted and will walk away from their screens because they are mentally and emotionally exhausted. They both have complained of headaches at the end of each day. My daughter is unable to focus and retain information like she used to. She is also checked out. We all know that schools fill an essential function in our society. When we close schools, the impact it has is profound. Remote learning is creating large learning gaps and links to higher rates of mental illness. We are depriving our children of formative, social, and peer relationships. My children are struggling to make up the growing social and educational deficit by going to online learning. Keeping the students out of school will make recovering from this pandemic much harder in the long term. Please stop intensifying educational inequality and open all of our schools. Our schools have the best safe practices, and I know our schools are safe. Please open them. Thank you.
Roger Pujak. Apologies for the last name pronunciation.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Roger Pujak. I have two students at, in BVSD, one at Boulder High School and one at Crestview Elementary. I'm a founding member of the parent group of BVSD Educational Advocates. You know, when I listen to these meetings, I get the impression that it's like rearranging the chairs on the Titanic. And Rob, I applaud your effort to bring Black educators together and understand their challenges, but you've got a huge problem on your hands right now. You've got massive problem with poor grades, dropouts, and God forbid, more suicide. You've got thousands of private schools in Boulder County, or thousands of kids in private schools in Boulder County that are going to school full-time, five days a week, but BVSD cannot get their act together. You can't make it happen. You say you're looking at January, but giving the numbers back in August, you shut it down, and it was a fraction of what they are today. You're not going to open the schools in August, and you know damn well you're not going to open them. Why are you leading us on? Why are you lying to us once again about opening the schools? You're not going to do it. You're going to wait for the vaccine. What happens this fall in 2021? If it's as bad as it was in 2020, it's going to be another disaster. You don't know what you're doing. The BOE, and Rob, you people need to step down and let other people come in and take over and get the job done. Thank you.
Doug Day. Is Doug on the line?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I was muted, I guess. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm a parent of two students and a member of the Parents Educational Advocates Group. I'm also an air quality scientist at CU. I have three main points I'd like to address. First, please do not tie opening and closing schools to community infection rates. Those rates are highly decoupled from transmission of COVID in schools when run with multi-layered safety protocols like BVSD has implemented. Data throughout the country and world confirms this over and over. COVID is largely driven by super-spreading events, which does not apply to safely-run school environments. Waiting for the community rates to go to zero or much lower would be effectively submitting to waiting for the vaccine to take full effect, which could be midsummer if we're lucky. That's not an option for the children of our community. That said, I would like to emphasize that throughout the recent surge that is now waning, the cases in BVSD regions of Boulder County have remained relatively low and stable. Second, please seriously reassess quarantine protocols, especially in light of the changes being made at the federal and state levels. If indoor air quality is prioritized, mask-wearing strictly enforced, as has been at BVSD, and always quarantining everyone in the entire room is most certainly overkill and guaranteed to bring the system down, as it apparently did in November. Third, please do not equate remote learning to in-person learning as in any way comparable with deciding whether to offer in-person options. There are studies suggesting that the average scholastic, scholastic net progress associated with remote learning per month is approximately zero. Some students may benefit and manage to keep up with grade level, while most others are falling behind. This doesn't even touch on the huge developmental and emotional tolls that closing schools have caused for youth and community already. This is nothing short of an emergency. None of this requires reinventing the wheel. Schools have done this successfully throughout the country and the world and graciously provided us with compelling data. Thank you.
Okay, we have Chris Nelson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Good evening. I am the parent of a sophomore and eighth grader in BVSD and a founding member of the Boulder Valley Educational Advocates on Facebook. Please look for us. Remote learning is a direct violation of the vision and mission of BVSD. All of your students, including the forgotten secondary students, are entitled to a challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunity. That is not the definition of remote learning. Your value statement to address the intellectual growth, health and physical development, and socially-emotional well-being of students is being ignored. BVSD students are falling behind academically, especially with the ridiculous quarter system for secondary students. Your teens are making life and death decisions under extreme mental duress. Students are developing health issues due to the exorbitant amount of screen time, and many kids are becoming shells of their normal selves. Your long-term student outcomes of ignite, equip, and soar are being directly negatively impacted. As Tina mentioned at your planning meeting, your sole focus as a board should be getting all kids who choose to do so back to in-person learning. Board members also discussed a general theme of feeling disengaged from your community and an issue with relationships between parents, students, and teachers. Other school boards have figured out better ways to have public engagement and to move forward with returning kids to school in January. Adams Twelve is hosting town hall meetings and has solicited input from parents through the District Parent Advocacy Group, not just parents who support individual, union, or district representative agendas. DPS just announced today that all students will be back to full-time in-person learning on February first. You have had weeks, if not months, to fix your epic fail fall-layered reintroduction plan, yet your students, all students, have no idea if they will be in a classroom four weeks from today. CDPH released an amended guidance today that states there is no capacity limit for critical businesses, including schools. No layered approach is needed. And please stop targeting your high school students. They follow pandemic rules just as much, if not more so, than any adult that goes grocery shopping or has coffee or lunch with their coworkers. They need and deserve to be back in school full-time just as much as any other grade. BVSD, please remember your own catchphrase, "All Together for All Students." All grades must be back together in the classroom on January 5th. Quoting Dr. Anthony Fauci on Colorado school guidance, "Close bars, open schools, and that's it." Thank you.
Okay, Colette Ventura.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I am speaking to remind the board and district leadership that there are middle and high school students in your population that you were elected and hired to serve. That may seem like I am stating the obvious, but however, after listening to multiple board meetings and enduring an extremely slanted layered reintroduction plan that allotted one paltry day of in-person learning for secondary students, it needs to be said, this part of the BVSD population is suffering immensely. Whether or not you choose to take responsibility for it, BVSD's marginalization of these students plays a role in the current mental health crisis. Some of these students will endure lifelong ramifications because of it. There is more and more research coming out about how damaging remote learning is for the social and emotional needs of students. Anxiety, depression, suicidal behavior. ERs are now not only running out of beds for COVID patients, but for teenagers in the throes of mental health crisis. I have stated from the beginning that suicide is a greater risk for this age group than a deadly case of COVID. Data will back this up. I see comments on the Boulder Valley Educational Advocates Facebook page, which I am an active member of, from parents who are trying everything to help their struggling kids. Comments like, "My child is struggling so much and I feel helpless. My straight A student just told me they hate school. On suicide watch." This should bother you. It should make you feel uncomfortable, knowing the role BVSD's layered approach played in this. And yet BVSD still will not use your resources and position to change it. There is much more data now about COVID and mitigation efforts. All schools can reopen safely. Governor Polis, Dr. Fauci, Dr. Reddell, all state that schools should be open. BVSD must stop neglecting the needs of the secondary students. These students deserve nothing less than the same in-person learning opportunities as any other BVSD student. For some, their lives depend on it.
Okay, Shelley Miller.
Shelley had to leave, but when we have an opportunity, Jane and Steph are online now.
Great, let's go to Jane. Jane, you're on mute.
Sorry, thank you. My name is Jane Cole, and I'm a parent of a middle school student. I am speaking today on behalf of my students, fellow BVSD families, and the local student advocacy groups in support of a return to in-person learning for all students. We have learned a lot about COVID-19 since this pandemic began impacting our communities. Within the past two months, leaders within the CDC and WHO are publicly speaking about the need to prioritize in-person learning. We definitely know that not being in school does lasting damage to our students academically, mentally, and emotionally. Studies across the globe are showing that schools are not super-spreaders, even when community spread is high. In fact, schools are safer for our children because we can strictly enforce safety precautions such as masks and distance. On November 21st, our governor put together a task force with the sole intention of getting students back in school in January. I applaud BVSD for having a district member in this group, and I sincerely hope that this task force, along with the new appropriately relaxed quarantine guidelines recently published by the CDC, will give everyone the tools they need to put all of our kids, not just elementary, back in school where they belong. Last Sunday, Dr. Fauci told ABCs This Week that in-person classes should be the default position. He went on to say that the spread of COVID-19 among children and from children is not really very big at all, not like one would have suspected. So let's try to get the kids back. In closing, I'd like to ask that the board and Superintendent Rob Anderson be transparent with the community about your plans for reopening schools at all levels so that we can all feel heard and work collaboratively toward the goal that I hope we all want. Our children need not be another victim of this pandemic. Getting kids in classrooms will help save their mental and educational well-being for years to come. Thank you.
And let's go to Steph Fries now.
Okay, am I good?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you to secondary teachers and the secondary school administrators that have supported in-person learning and provided leadership to make that happen for three days for students in October and November. I want to urge the Board of Education and superintendent staff to open the high schools for in-person learning in January. The school district constantly speaks of equity and putting students first. However, over the past four months, there has been no equity in the secondary schools. Students taking classes at Boulder Tech were in-person two days a week long before the rest of the other high schools opened up for just one day a week learning. Some could argue that the classes taught at Boulder Tech are more hands-on. However, my two sons are in a class at Brumfield High School that is literally supposed to be building a house. That project has not moved forward at all this year. There are other many, multiple classes in schools that are still needed to be hands-on besides building a house and those opportunities at Boulder Tech. Gym class is a hands-on activity. Science labs are a hands-on, hands-on activity, as well as many other classes there. There are so many other reasons for our secondary students to have the opportunity for in-person learning, but I have to truncate those due to time, and many have others, many others have touched on them. My questions for you are, do you have a plan ready to go that would include an option for high school students to attend school multiple days in person beginning in January, as the governor has requested? Who is responsible for overcoming any hurdles to such a plan? And what are they doing to overcome them? Where does the buck stop? Who is responsible for stepping up and taking responsibility for the lack of district leadership this fall? BVSD used to be a leader in education. Your lack of action and transparency in the progress of secondary education and how you have handled the last four months is a big disappointment. Please stop spending money and time on needless things like signs that are color-coded in front of a school or significantly overlooking COVID health reports that have nothing to do with our school systems, like reports on senior citizens. There is a community here that wants to make in-person learning happen now. Please use us. Please get to work on what matters. Get to work on your students and provide an option for those that want to attend school in person. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andy Malkil, and I'm sorry if I mispronounced that.
Hello, it's Craig. Can you hear me?
Yes.
As a member of the greater BVSD community, I want to thank you for this opportunity. First, contrary to what I believe the other Rob said, face shields have not actually been provided to all staff. And despite the optimistic outlook by Dr. Bina, the actual results of the Thanksgiving break won't fully show up for another week or two, let alone the impact of the Christmas break, which won't show up until mid-January through early February. I also want to remind you that not everybody to be concerned about in a school building is under eighteen, and in-person schooling absolutely unequivocally contributes to community spread and vice versa. I understand there's no good solution for learning during the time of COVID, but keeping them and their families alive is putting students first. Before you decide to reopen in-person during the midst of the incredible surge of coronavirus hospitalizations and deaths, which is only going to get worse after the holidays, I wonder if any of you have talked to any of the families of any of the students, staff, teachers, or their loved ones who have actually died or gotten seriously ill as a result of contracting COVID through a school system and have asked them if they thought in-person schooling is worth it, especially given that a vaccine is just around the corner, which will make things much, much safer by next fall? If you do decide to reopen schools, what is the number of school-related COVID deaths or serious illnesses that are acceptable before you decide that experiment has failed and return to online only? If you don't have the answer to this question, you haven't really thought your plan through. I just ask that you be transparent with the public about that number. If you do reopen schools, there are much stronger health and safety measures to implement, including installing HEPA air purifiers in all classrooms, providing proper disposable masks for students, and doing pooled testing at schools. I hope you take these suggestions seriously, do as much as possible, not the bare minimum. I'll be glad to help with any of these solutions. Thank you.
Jennifer Beegan.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So, good evening. You've all heard from me mostly via email this year, wearing my hat of a classroom teacher or wearing my hat of a Lafayette Elementary parent. However, tonight, I'm wearing my numbers and data hat because since August, numbers and data have been used as reasons for why students couldn't return in person. And I'm only focusing on elementary because I will let the other speakers tonight, who have already spoken, address the secondary neglect that has been apparent since August, and it is neglect. Let's go back to August 17th, when Cherry Creek High School, a Cherry Creek School District in Arapahoe County, opened their buildings with a county's 4.1% positivity rate. And just two weeks later, Jeffco opened theirs with a 3.1% positivity rate. But BVSD abruptly moved back to Phase One from its intended Phase Three despite its incredibly low 1.7 positivity rate. It took two months for all elementary students to return, two months to figure it out, when a Plan B should have been on the radar since July. Now, we're right back where we started in August. Our numbers are still much lower than those of both Arapahoe and Jeffco Counties, with Arapahoe at 11.4% positivity, Jeffco at 10.8, and Boulder at 6.9. The CDC has reduced quarantine timelines. There's adequate and relevant evidence that points to a successful in-person return should students and families choose that should students and families choose that option, especially when some elementary schools, such as Lafayette Elementary, saw only one case that led to a one-person, one-class quarantine, one-person, one-staff quarantine in the four weeks when the entire school was in person. The numbers and the data are there, but they were there in August, and BVSD still shut schools. And then it took two months to adapt. We don't have two months. You have four weeks and the past four months to learn from. If you can't make it happen, then please reach out to districts who did, and who can, and who most likely will. Because you can't continue to blame the situation on numbers and data, whether it's COVID cases or staffing. Figure it out and serve our students. This resignation neglect is shameful. Thank you.
Okay, Kelly Russak?
Hi, can you hear me? Okay. Hi, my name is Kelly Russak, and I'm a mom to a fifth grader at Flatirons and a seventh grader at Choice. My questions and concerns tonight revolve around mental health. I wonder, how does BVSD want to remember the COVID era? How did BVSD build the student community during these challenging times? What did the students take away from this chapter in their life? I can't stop thinking about the mental health of the students, teachers, faculty, parents, siblings, and all others. How are these children doing? What are they processing? How are they processing? Who is with them supporting their stability and resilience? All families are different. Some are healthy and some are not. Some have support and others do not. Some are struggling with food, money, work, health. It's all intense. The one thing I know is that a healthy mind can almost help anyone through the most difficult times, times like these. I want to propose two solutions to this issue I see. I think it would be beneficial to all the students and teachers to have a weekly health class that discusses ways to ease stress, language to use during stressful situations, a roundtable circle time where students can share how COVID is affecting them and/or their family and friends. What does depression look like? What does anxiety feel like? What does stress feel like? What this will do is open dialogue to this universal situation that is changing all of our lives. With a possible ripple effect, these students and teachers who are engaging in this activity will perhaps begin to model these new tactics with the intention of connecting and expressing together at home as a family. My other thought is creating a helpline that will be available 24 hours a day for anyone who needs to talk, express, and/or report their needs. Every week, I receive our Choice newsletter that if you need help, call these numbers. This is great, but I think we can do better. Perhaps every signature of every email district-wide has the emergency number listed. We need this information to be plastered everywhere. Mental health calls and emails need to be taken seriously and followed up on. Thank you.
Okay, and our last speaker is Kenneth Jensen.
So thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am a father of three high school students in the Boulder Valley School District. And I have to say, I'm incredibly impressed by the amount that other people have researched and tried to provide you data. I've seen the same data. I'm throwing away the script, and I'm just going to ask you to think and listen and look at the data. The data supports getting the kids back in school. We are in a mental health crisis. I'm a college professor. I see these students struggling with online learning at the college level and think, how can we expect our high school students, who are in their formative years, to survive this? You have to take action. You cannot simply let fear prevent you from doing what's right. It will be on your conscience forever, the impact of the mental illness and the suicides that are inevitable to happen if you don't make the change. I'll wait the rest of my time.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is board communication, and then I think we'll take a break, if that's okay with the board members? Everyone? Okay? All right, Richard, do you want to start?
I want to thank the students from Brumfield High School, the parents that came and spoke around Alicia Sanchez, and all of these other parents that spoke so passionately about wanting their kids back in school. I personally, as an individual board member, understand the need to get our kids back to school. And I'm also looking at, I guess, conflicting messages that we're hearing, not just for the parents that just spoke, but also from national media as it relates to the safetiness of our particular schools and how safe they are. But I'm also listening to our own public health officials and what their recommendations are. And I also need to look at the staff recommendations and how they're looking at opening schools. And I know that we're shooting for January 5th, and I'm hoping that we do get back into session on January 5th. I did ask the question earlier as it related to all children coming back to school. If, in fact, all conditions are right, that all children, P, K, through 12, will be back in session. And I'm hoping that in the next couple of weeks, that we'll be hearing better news that will get our kids back to school. I know that there's a lot of emotion involved in all of this, and I keep hearing some really harsh comments as it relates to the Board of Education and the role and responsibility of the board, and especially comments that we should be ashamed in terms of, and do we sleep at night regarding the mental health of our children? And I guess we do. I guess we do look at that, and we are very concerned about that. But I personally am also very concerned, and I would probably lose more sleep if I know that one or two children have died because they didn't pay attention to recommendations and conditions. Does that make it safe for our kids to get back to school? Having said that, I'm just hoping that conditions do improve to a point that our kids will be able to get back to school in January. All our kids will be able to get back to school in January. That's all I have to say. You know, it's hard. It's hard as a board member because you're placed between a rock and a hard place. You're listening to this, you're listening to that. You're listening to the passionate pleas of parents. And it becomes very difficult. I do want to say, though, that in 2021, we do have a school board election. And I'm hoping that some of these passionate parents would look into running for the school board and help support their passions as it relates to many things, not just the pandemic, but many things in our school system. So I do want to thank everybody for their comments and their passionate pleas, and the students in particular, because they are the people that we need to support, and that's what education is all about. So thank you very much.
Okay, Kathy?
I echo what Richard just said. I am deeply appreciative of the students taking time to come, of the parents taking their time to come and explain their concerns and their cares and their deep passion for the education that their children are supposed to be getting, and in some cases, they're not getting it. I would be lying if I didn't say it's painful to hear some of the anger and frustration against the school board and against some of our administrators because I truly believe we are all acting with best intentions and with the sincere hope of getting all of our students back to school as soon as possible. But we have to look at the whole picture. We have to look at the safety of our staff. We have to look at the safety of all of our students. And we decided, and a long time ago, that we would follow the recommendations of the people who know the most about this, which is our public health officials. I don't regret that decision for a minute. And their knowledge has evolved, as has ours. We didn't know anything about this virus when it started hitting us back in February and March, and we're learning more and more, and we're getting closer to a vaccine. And I just hope that we can hang together instead of pulling apart and attacking each other, as some of us have been doing through emails and through some of the comments tonight. So, we hear you. We support you. We want to be there together, and I just hope we can stay together and work together as we get through this. And I just want to say thank you to the parents from Sanchez. It was a little bit of good news and all of this bad news to hear kind of that the school is coming together, that students are happy to be there, that the leadership is pulling together with the parents. Thank you, Ralph, for being a leader of that. And so I just want to say thanks to those parents for coming forward and giving us a little bit of good news, although I know we still have a long road in front of us to get to where we need to for all of those students. So, thank you, everybody, for coming forward. Please, let's try to work together and see how well we can get through this.
Hey, Donna?
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for coming forward. It was good to hear the good news from Sanchez Elementary, and thank you for that. For the students that spoke up and the parents. I was taking notes as people were writing, and my takeaways were things like eight weeks versus 16 weeks, staying in bed, testing data, suicide rate, communication poor, be prepared, mission first, people always, seniors are hurting, in-person is difficult, kids have their cameras off, poor grades, dropouts, suicides yet again, emotional tolls, emotional, emotional suffering, what Fauci said. My heart's racing now because, I don't know if I'm the only board member, but I know that my brother killed himself seven years ago. And I deal with that every day. He didn't live far away, and it was an emotional toll, and it took a hard impact on me. So weighing that with our kiddos out there suffering and hearing from teachers that cameras are turned off and kids are in bed and kids aren't tuning in, and I know personally that two weeks ago, a good friend of mine that is also part of the district, that student was put on suicide watch. So, I hear you. I want this in-person learning to happen sooner rather than later, and I want us to get back to everybody being safe and learning in an environment that's not so remote. There's so many issues with remote learning. We may have to dig deep in our pockets as school districts and offer families, whether it be free summer school or free academic assistance. We've got parents paying for pods. We're talking about monitors coming into the school. If we can have monitors in the school, we can have teachers in the school. So I'm probably going rattling on and on and taking so much time, but the emotional impact on our students hits me hard. Thank you for everybody's comments tonight. That's all.
Lisa?
Lisa? Did Kitty want to go?
Oh, sorry, Kitty. Yeah, okay. Well, I want to echo what Richard, Kathy, and Donna have said. Thank the parents for contacting us, for speaking tonight. It's so difficult hearing what's happening, and it breaks my heart. And I know that we all want the kids back in school as soon as they possibly can. Thank you especially to the students who spoke, because I know it's not easy sometimes, or most of the time, for students to speak to a roomful, well, it's not a roomful now, but to speak to all the adults. So, thank you for that. I've also heard from a number of parents who are having a very opposite experience from the ones we heard from tonight. And it's, well, I don't want to say it's puzzling to me because, you know, kids are different, families are different. But I guess it's heartening to know that it's not everybody who is experiencing the same difficulties. I've had parents tell me they thought the communication was crystal clear, and one friend of mine said, "You would have to be trying not to find it to not get the information." And yet we have parents who are saying, "We're not being transparent. We don't communicate." So I don't know where that disconnect is, because I believe both of them. Everybody knows their own experience. And I want to say something about a post I put on Facebook that maybe I should have anticipated would have been misinterpreted, but I didn't. I asked, was anybody thinking of holding their student back? And just wanted to see, was that something anyone had even thought about? We have a lot of families here who didn't send their kids to kindergarten this year, and I don't blame them. I probably wouldn't either. But people took that to mean that I was recommending it and that the district might be recommending it. And I just want to say, that is not the case. I was just simply asking a question. One thing I want to talk about is CASB, the conference that we had, because I think we got a lot of interesting things there. And one of the things we got, and this would be available to anybody, is an organization called Renaissance that has done the most comprehensive study of how students are doing right now and where they are falling behind. And they had like 5 million students, and it was nationwide. So if anyone's interested in seeing what the most comprehensive research tells us, you can go to renazance.com, and that could be helpful. And I think that's all that I have for now. But I just want to tell parents, I understand. Everybody has a right to their anger. They have a right to their disappointment. And it's just a very difficult time we're going through right now. Okay, back to Lisa.
Okay. This is, I mean, this is definitely an emotional topic, and I appreciate folks taking so much of their time tonight to share their experiences and hopes and fears, our students in particular. I know when, especially in our emails, people want us to make sure that we hear them about how difficult this is and how important it is to get our kids back to school. And they want to know if we really understand what it's like to have kids at home. So I just maybe wanted to take a minute to say that many of us on the board and our superintendent and many folks in this cabinet, we have kids in BVSD. And while every family has a different series of obstacles they're trying to overcome right now, we're also all absolutely experiencing the struggles in remote learning. And in kids' social loss and in the impact on parents' ability to work. And we all are, and we all have been, just deeply committed to getting our kids back safely to in-person learning just as soon as possible. So thanks again for everyone who chimed in tonight.
Hey, Stacy?
Like everyone else, I'd like to thank all the speakers. I'd like to thank the Sanchez parents. We had the opportunity to visit there pre-COVID, and it's such a great place doing great things, so it was really nice to hear from them. I'd like to echo Lisa a little bit. I was trying to figure out how to say it, and she said it very, well, much better than I would. But I wanted to share that I actually have a high school senior. So I- So, I am keenly aware of what he's missing out on and what it means for him to not be in school. And it, and like Kathy, it really upsets me when I hear that the public doesn't think that we have best intentions at heart. None of us on the board or in the BVSD administration or Dr. Anderson are public health experts. That's why we partner with Boulder and Broomfield Public Health so that we can get the best information that they have at the time to make decisions that we need to make. And, and we all want teachers and students and staff back to school safely as soon as possible. I don't think there's one person who doesn't want that. So, I thank all of, everyone for coming to speak. And thank, Lisa, thank you for explaining that we all are going through those struggles too. And, you know, my senior might not be having the same experience that some of the students said today, but he's missing out on a lot, and I am aware of that every single day, that he's not leaving the house to go to school. So, I just want everyone out there to know that we do understand and we do care, and we're trying to do the best we can. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thanks, all of you for so eloquently saying. What I'm also looking to say is that we are, I think this whole board is fully in support of in-person learning. Now, we're just tackling the operational challenges. And, you know, I'm sorry that the speakers had to wait such a long time, but we are spending a lot of time learning about what the district is doing to try to change our outcomes so that we have more in-person learning when we come back in January. Because that is, it's certainly my top priority, is to have in-person learning for all kids. And like Lisa and Stacy, I have secondary students in the system as well. And I am, you know, doing the whole remote learning journey with varied levels of success. So, I do appreciate all of your comments, and I continue to read your emails. Many of you emailed multiple times, and I'll keep reading your emails and responding. I, you know, and I appreciate it. I, I do hope that we all maintain civility in our emails, understanding that the board is working with best intentions. And we do need to try to come together at some point, you know, as we, as we all try to get back to in-person together. I also just wanted to recognize the Sanchez parents and the incredible work that DAC has done, and Ralph in particular, in navigating the SAC process. It's been a pretty great turnaround process to watch as a board member. This is my eighth year on the board, and I think this is the best effort I've ever seen around a turnaround plan for a school. I also just wanted to extend my personal thanks to Ann Cooper for all the time that she spent in our district. And the change in the food culture that happened really when my first child went to kindergarten, I think, is when we were noticing that change. So, it was pretty exciting and a different way of thinking about nutrition that's pretty close to a lot of the roots of the Boulder community and our local food efforts. I also wanted to congratulate Stacy on the CASB reelection. That is exciting that we continue to have a representative on the school board to help advocate for our interests at a state level. I also want to thank community member Bob Smart, who hung in with our audit process, which was a great audit. He's been a huge asset to our auditing team, so that was great. So, with that, I'd like for us to take a ten-minute break, if that's okay with everybody, and then we'll come back at nine fifteen. Is that good? All right, let's resume our meeting. We're heading into our information items, and our first item is the 2021-22 Budget Development Process Timeline and Milestones.
Thanks, Tina. I'm going to hand it over to Bill Sutter, our CFO, who will be providing this presentation for you all, Seema.
Great, thanks, Rob. So, I will bring up this slide deck here. Make sure that's coming through okay?
Yep.
All right. So, I, at this time, in the budget development process, it's an update on the timeline for information and input and feedback and action items that happen. We've looked at this a couple of times already this fall. As in the last couple of years, we've started a little bit earlier than we had in the past. But, so this will feel somewhat familiar to some people, but it really is an opportunity to get the word out to the public for the timeline associated with budget development. So, this is the presentation that we call our Timeline and Milestones. And so, it's a few slides that walks through the next few months of budget development. So, really, the process runs about ten months for when we begin talking about the next fiscal year's budget. We're just barely into starting the fiscal year in September when we're already beginning to talk about the next fiscal year. So, what this really shows is that there are lots of opportunities and a long period of time for stakeholder input regarding the development of the budget. So, throughout this timeline, we have numerous meetings with employee groups, parent groups, ones that are regularly scheduled, ones that are ad hoc that come up. And so, there's just a really long period of time and ample opportunities for folks to give input. Next, we layer on the Board of Education meetings and the work sessions that are scheduled throughout that timeline. There are a couple of months, namely December, as well as November and March, where there's only one official board meeting, but also often a work session. So, what these are, board meetings, certainly, there's the opportunity for public input. So, anybody can sign up and provide their feedback on items regarding the budget. So, again, not something that people need to wait for some particular time. There's numerous board meetings, so folks can sign up at any time. Next, we layer on what we call our data inputs. So, these are items that are scheduled either sometimes by statute, sometimes by just the timing of when things happen, some information from the federal level. But there, these, these data inputs are spread across the whole time period of this budget development. So, it's only towards the very end when we have a really complete picture of all the data. So, at some point, we have to make action or take action with incomplete data and have to move forward and react if things change. So, again, these are items that are things like enrollment updates, the governor's budget, the current year revenue forecast by the state that helps, gives us information as to where the budget is looking at the state level in the coming year. And so, each, each point along this way, we get a little bit more information and gets a clearer picture for us. What I want to point out here is just a couple of items that are coming up that will help really give us some information. They're really key points in the process. The December revenue forecast at the state, which is coming up either the end of next week or the first of the following week. It happens at the, around the twentieth of the month. But that is the next picture from the state as to where the current year revenue is coming in and whether it's meeting projections as the state is going through its current year budget process. Then in February, we have the Consumer Price Index, which is the Denver Aurora Lakewood CPI that is the number that drives what inflation is calculated against. And so, that drives per pupil funding increases to the extent that the state has funding available. So, that, again, is the federal information that's compiled and then released right around the first of February. And then our mid-year review of the, of the district's finances to, again, give us a picture of where our expenses are happening in the current year and where we think we're going to end, and then roll into the next fiscal year. Next, we have our feedback loop. So, these are board meetings and work sessions that are scheduled with a specific budget-related topic. So, again, there are other work sessions and board meetings scheduled throughout this time, but these in particular are the ones that are specific to, have an item specific to the budget. The next one being the one in January on the nineteenth, that's a specific scheduled work session on the budget. Next, we have our action items. So, these are either driven by contract, by employee contract, or action by the board to adopt the budget for the next fiscal year, that deadline by June thirtieth, statutory. And then that sort of thin gray line there, the staffing allocation. So, that action of distributing staffing really sets in motion the implementation of the budget for the next fiscal year. And so, we have to get that information out so schools can plan schedules and staff classrooms and everything like that. And so, when we start rolling that out between February and April, that's a big commitment of the budget that happens for the next year. So, then we sort of pile all those on top of each other, and it really helps paint the picture that we're continuously getting information throughout the process. We're having feedback loops with the Board of Education, and then we're starting to take actions as we get into the spring for the next fiscal year. Next, I have a few updates on the budget development for the next year. So, this is information since the last time we talked, the, the new information, the things that were kind of unknowns back in early October. So, first, the governor released his budget. It's required that the governor releases his or her plan for the next fiscal year on November first. This year was certainly a little different in that there were a number of ballot items that had not been decided at the point that the governor had to release his budget. But what was rolled out that first of November and then updated right after the election is a restoration of major reductions. So, there were a number of major reductions made to K-12, higher ed, numerous programs throughout state, investments and services. And so, the, the restoration of those major reductions was a key focus of the governor's budget. Economic stimulus, so there was a special session that just happened last week, and that was undertaken to spend some resources that were available rather than waiting for the legislative session to start in January and really get those dollars flowing out to individuals and businesses in the state. Saving for the future, so the governor does include putting some money away, those, the dollars that are available that have already been collected. The end of last fiscal year for the state was better than anticipated. So, putting some money into the reserves at the state level. And then, the impacts of the ballot initiatives, it did increase about one hundred and five million available for the state to spend. So, those ballot items being the repeal of the Gallagher Amendment, which had a three hundred million dollar placeholder in the budget, and so that was able to be removed. There was also increases to the state education fund for the Proposition EE tobacco tax, and then revenue reductions for multiple years for Proposition 116, which is the income tax reduction. So, there were some revenue increases as well as revenue reductions that were built into the governor's revised budget. Next, we have the more specific items relative to K-12. So, it's a restoration, a complete restoration of the cuts that were made for the current fiscal year. So, those reductions that were made puts that all back. It's about eight hundred and eleven million for K-12 schools. It increases the average per pupil funding by about nine hundred dollars. It does bring the budget stabilization factor back to where it was in 2019, '20. So, there's still a shortfall of funding of five hundred and seventy-two million across the state for K-12 education. But this is certainly a big investment back into K-12 for next year. There are some concerns around this proposal for the sustainability beyond the 21-22 fiscal year with all the economic unknowns. And this is where those state revenue forecasts in December and March will really be an indicator of whether the state is on its economic recovery as is thought at this point in time. So, what this proposal does for, for Boulder in particular is it does restore the funding that the district essentially backfilled with one-time resources for the current year. So, while this sounds, i- is extremely beneficial to the district, it really just puts in place the ongoing funding for what is currently being supported by one-time dollars. So, I just want to be a little bit cautious that this does not mean that there will necessarily be lots of new dollars available to spend. So, we did get that influx of CARES Act funds in the current year, which is really helping us support all the additional expenditures that we're having currently to run schools and run all the operations that we need to do. So, this restoration of the funding is really just kind of putting that back in place. So, again, I just kind of want to point out that it's, we'll say cautiously optimistic as to what next year looks like. So, that's what I kind of just spoke to, the restoration of those one-time resources for us. So, we currently have quite a bit of staffing on one-time resources that was built into the budget. And so, those additional funds from the state, bringing those cuts back, would help support that into the future. The student count is certainly a concern. There'll be an update on that next. I think that's your next addenda item. We're down about five percent from where we were last year. We had projected a small decline when we built the budget originally of about two hundred students, and that increased by about fourteen hundred students to sixteen hundred students overall. And so, the idea of just how many students are going to return, is this likely a short-term dip? Lichen it to an economic recovery? Is it a dip in the students and then a return to more consistent forecast with what we had been planning? And so, again, looking forward to next year, any investments that the district will make will likely be focused on one-time dollars or repurposing existing ongoing resources. Another thing to note, that on the fourth, December fourth- Another thing to note that on the fourth, December fourth, there was a joint budget committee update. Craig Harper, who's the legislative staff who supports K-12 finance, talked about that statewide pupil count shortfall. And it's around two to four percent is kind of the the number that most districts are seeing. And this is across the state. What that translates into is about two hundred and sixty million dollars in the current year budget at state level that would be, could be redistributed. It either could be pulled back by the state or it could be redistributed out to districts. It could actually reduce the negative factor in the current year. And so that's one thing I think that that is going to be looked at early in the legislative session when it starts in January. There is a bit of a, we'll call it a yo-yo effect or a yo-yo problem of the current year with a decline in students, rapid, and this is statewide impact, rapid decline, but then a rapid return of students when it's so difficult to project because all the typical enrollment patterns are not there. That, you know, planning for the future when we have to staff schools is it just really creates a lot of challenges in in building the budget. So to the extent that the state can help smooth the peaks and valleys off of the funding for districts will be very helpful as we're trying to bridge this kind of two-year problem. And then also, there was some discussion at that JBC update of House Bill twenty-fourteen eighteen, which is the related to the levy, the mill levies. And restoring districts back to where they were when they de-brewed is what it's called. And the recommendation, the staff recommendation from Craig is that the General Assembly move forward with legislation that begins to phase out these property tax credits beginning next year. And so that's certainly a topic of discussion that'll come up. There's a desire to get a interrogatory to the State Supreme Court early in the session related to that to make sure that it will be able to or won't be challenged or couldn't be challenged. And so they they want to do that early in the session so that it doesn't hold things up towards the end. And the and Craig's point is that this legislation is really critical to improving equity in the state's property tax system and the sustainability of K-12 funding overall to really prevent the erosion of local support for K-12 education. So for next steps, again, as I mentioned a couple of times, the December state revenue forecast is coming up in another week or so. We'll have the state supplemental budget in January when the legislature convenes. Back to that two hundred and sixty-odd million dollars. That's significant restoration of or really support districts all across the state if those dollars were able to come back into support the second half of the year. The CARES dollars that we received, they all had to be expended by December thirtieth. So it would really be supportive of K-12 into the second half of the year. Then we'll do our revised budget for the current year. That'll come forward to the board in January. And then, as I noted, the mid-year analysis, we'll bring that forward in February to really look at where we are expenditure patterns in the current in revenue collections going on in the current year. So that is the end of the presentation. I'll certainly answer any questions.
Thanks so much. Can I ask a quick question on the timeline? How does the, how does the, how does the teacher union negotiations fit in terms of timing? And is the contract, I think the contract we sign goes into effect this calendar year? So where do we insert that in?
That, there's a, there are dates within the contract of when they would start. I believe it's February first, maybe is when is the date that's in the contract. Am I right on that, Mike?
That's correct.
Yep. And so we just have to have that negotiated and approved by the board by the time the budget's adopted for the next year.
Okay. So that, but that, those are going to go into effect in parallel, correct?
Correct, for July one.
Right, okay, thanks. All right, Richard, any questions?
No questions, thanks, Bill.
All right, Kathy?
So I just, I I figure you'll let us know this, Bill, as we go along. But I'm wondering what student count you build your budget to for next year? Because I don't think we're going to have those students come back second semester. So and we aren't necessarily, we might have the money from the state. So what is your thinking about how we build the budget on what numbers?
So the enrollment projection process. So we have, we'll say, we'll consider the segregation of duties when it comes to enrollment projections because it is so tied into budget development. So Glenn Segru, who's up next, is going to speak to the current year enrollment trends and where the students did or did not show up as expected. And sort of it hints as to what it will look like for next year. It is going to be extremely challenging. And so we will have to be very conservative and have backup plans as far as what staffing is going to look like into next year. But those enrollment projections aren't completed yet because we just completed the current year data. And we need that current year data to roll forward into the next year's projection.
And I just got a couple of questions because I know everybody's tired and it's been late. So I just want anybody who's still hanging in and listening to understand that if they take away the tax credits and we increase our mill levies, that's not going to mean more money for Boulder. What I'm hoping, though, is that it means that the money at least stays within education for the state. So that's just going to be a lobbying effort that we're going to need our lobbyists and you, Bill, and everybody to to pay attention to because that wasn't written into the legislation. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, absolutely. The concern that those dollars would be offset and support something else at the state level. The the intent is clearly there that it will support K-12 education. But I don't think it's necessarily a requirement. So yes, definitely lots of legislative efforts to make sure that those dollars do flow into K-12.
And they would be our community's taxpayer dollars because they would be increasing our mills. But they're not meaning that Boulder gets more money. That's just the message I'm trying to get across.
Yep.
And the most it could go up for us is about two mills, one and a half mills, two mills?
Yeah, a hair under two mills.
Yeah. And then the other thing is, you, you, I guess we'll just see as you go into the budget because it's getting late. You talked about repurposing dollars. There's a lot of uncertainty around whether even the money from the state is sustainable or long-term. So it sounds like we're going to be building a budget on a lot of one-time dollars. Is that fair?
So we have always considered School Finance Act resources to be ongoing dollars. Certainly, the mechanism exists within the budget stabilization factor for it to go in one year and come out the following year. So it requires exercising some caution on committing dollars long-term to things that can't be undone, I would say.
Yeah, I I agree. It's not normal times, so we can't really, I think this has to be more cautious of making those assumptions about whether they're long-term or sustainable dollars. But we'll see, we'll have a better sense later. So thanks, Bill.
Hey, Donna?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I don't have very many questions. I I do get what Kathy's saying on the, we don't have a lot of mills to play around with. But with the sixteen hundred students that we're lacking and what the Daily Camera reported and what, you know, you you reiterated tonight, that that seems to me to translate into with our MLOs and our state funding and everything else into about sixteen million dollars. And and I have this deja vu of, I think it was around two thousand eight. I was still working in the district. But at that point, when we had that recession hit and and there were, we were lacking in funds in the district, we had to implement a reduction in force, kind of what you call it, not regulation, but act. And so everybody was kind of scrambling as far as will I have a job or not? Do you foresee something like that? Or is Glenn going to explain it more when he gets into the numbers?
I I think Glenn's focus is more on the current year as opposed to the projection for next year. There's the Glenn's peers in all the the big districts around the metro area and across the state are certainly in communication, just like I am, with CFOs across the state to sort of come up with a reasonable, rational projection methodology that has never had to have been used before, right? So this is not something that that anybody has any experience with trying to project and and the impacts of the vaccine. We've talked a lot about the the vaccine effectiveness and timing and availability. All of those things will really play into what will happen next fall. So there's discussions of basically what what percent of those students will come back? And so selecting that percentage that gets built into the model is the the decision point that gets made. And then we just have to be able to react to it and have enough safety net to either react with more staff if the kids are coming in or be able to backfill with with reserves or one-time dollars fund balance in the event that students don't show up for that additional year.
Is that it, Donna? All right, Kitty?
I don't have any questions, thanks.
Okay, Lisa?
Me neither.
All right, Stacy?
No questions, thanks.
Kathy?
Just to follow up to Donna's point, if we had to take a hit like that, we'd get to use averaging. So we wouldn't really have to take it all in one year, isn't that true?
Yes, the averaging is definitely coming in for every district in the state that's declining will will be benefit from the averaging formula that's built in there.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, I think we can move on to our next item. Thanks so much, Bill. And our next item is the October, as Bill foreshadowed, the October twenty twenty enrollment count and an analysis of trends observed by Glenn Segru.
Hi, thank you. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
So going on to my presentation, let me get this on the screen. Okay. So twenty twenty, a very interesting year. Overall trends, starting off. This year's presentation is a little bit different. Little more focused on what were the difference between what our expectations were and our only number for that really are projections and how things came in this year. And some discussions of past trends, not so much about trends going forward. Looking at the overall trends, we see our typical growth that we've had coming off the last decade, leveling out past twenty fifteen and then past twenty seventeen, starting our decline. This year, an exceptional decline, as we're all aware. Down about sixteen hundred kids, that's about five percent down. Where for a good, almost fifteen years now, we've probably been closer at or below one percent, either above or below. So five percent is a big loss overall that way. This chart also has some representation of our charter schools, which is the lighter bars. And the lower bars are non-charter schools. And charter schools have been very consistent for the last ten years, for sure. Those seem to fill up and stay that way. And this year, surprisingly, charters is one of the three groups that that seem to be, for lack of a better word, unaffected by the current conditions that we're in in terms of enrollment. So charters really came in to have a very typical year in terms of enrollment. We see sharp increases or decreases. This chart shows what gains and losses look like in terms of absolute growth. So the dark line here represents district as a whole. And this is also broken up in elementary, middle, and high growth as well. We can see the elementary waning as it has in recent years and even becoming negative past twenty seventeen. And those trends moving into middle and high too, which are leveling off as well. This year, we see big, the losses from from the pandemic really focused heavily at elementary, down almost twelve hundred kids or or ten percent from last year. And much of that being in kindergarten as well, which was down close to twenty percent from last year. Kindergarten alone was down about three hundred and seventy-one students. And middle school also significantly down as well, closer to seven percent, not as much as elementary. But we saw a big losses there as well. Now, the other group that seems to be unaffected, at least in terms of enrollment, is high school and came very, very close to projection. You don't know if maybe it would have been higher without it and how close the projection was. But from what we can tell, we didn't really see a lot of enrollment change at at high school within our borders. So there was, they were very close to what we would have expected them to be. Now, just this chart I usually use to show how smaller grade levels or I should say, lower grade levels and their relative size pushes through the system and causes change in the system, especially as as these big groups graduate out. This year, since all of these are bottomed out essentially, especially when you get to elementary, it's not really good at showing that, but it it does tell a different story. If we look at how this works, take eighth grade. This level right here represents what that grade level was. The lowest that grade level has been in ten years. And the highest is, the highest that grade level has been in ten years. And the white square is where we're at this year. In order to get a sense of what a typical enrollment would have looked like this year, I also have superimposed projections on top of that. And that's the triangles that we see this year. And and what this shows now is again, we see high school, again, very close to projection and what we would have expected. I think a little bit surprisingly, eighth grade as well was very close and certainly not bottomed out like the other grades. But what is interesting is where we can see six and seven is where a lot of the focus, the loss that we saw at middle was really at sixth and seventh grade. And then as you go lower in the grades, the variation between our expected enrollment and what actually came in seems to get bigger and bigger. And that really culminates at kindergarten, which is is way off kindergarten. In addition to having the choices of parents in the other grade levels of going to other programs and other schools outside of our district, it also appears a lot of kindergarten parents just simply withheld their kids this year as well. So and that will create an interesting dynamic for next year where those kids are going to pop up. We look at it regionally for resident students. So if we look at only the students within our borders and and take out out of district, again, the dark line represents our borders and take out out of district, again, the dark line represents the district as a total, the total losses among our resident students is very, very close to our total losses overall. And we also see in this chart what the, where the losses are for students between Boulder and the eastern communities as well. So again, this is where students live, not where they attend school. And of course, Boulder was the driver for growth in the past, has grown more negative recently. This year, Boulder and East District, although the eastern communities have a bigger loss here, in terms of percent, they're very close. They're both around 6% loss. So we don't really see any big variation geographically between eastern communities and Boulder that way. If we drill down this a little bit to the elementary level, again, these are resident students and broken out additionally by more communities, we see the trend that we've been seeing for a while with elementary waning and going heavily negative in recent years, particularly in Boulder, and Lafayette and Erie picking up a large chunk of the growth that we've been seeing largely from new housing in those communities. This year, what's really interesting is even Lafayette and Erie is negative in very much the same proportion as the rest of the district. We see Boulder has the biggest total losses of almost 500 students, but in terms of percent, they're not too far off. Boulder's down about 10%. Brookfield and Lewisville are a little bit higher than that, 11% to 12%, and Lafayette's a little bit below that, closer to 7%, 8%. Looking at some of the other factors that we look at, migration really took an interesting turn this year. So I call this migration, but it also includes students coming in and out of private schools and homeschool and other programs as well. The top line here are new students to the district. So these are, again, are new move-ins or coming in from those other programs. We take out kindergarten, so this is just students coming in to the system. And the red line are the students leaving the system for those same reasons. And when we get growth here, that's represented by these lines and the arrows, that is the net growth. So you can see how these two trends can vary from year to year, and that produces growth. It's not a growth in this respect, this is based on new kids per se or leaving students. There's a lot of concentration on one or the other. It's how they both interact. When we come to this year, we see a net loss, because the red line is above the blue line, of over 800 students. Now, I think that the general consensus is these losses are more choice-driven this year than any real fundamental migration patterns. We're still looking at that. I think it kind of depends on your, what group it's in. But I think the line here really represents an increase in choice out of the district. But what's interesting is this negative net gain is really an interaction between these two. I think we all are thinking a lot about students in the district that have left because of the current situation and the pandemic to other programs. But what's also happening is you have these students who would have enrolled and didn't. So this, these may be students from previously going to a private school that were going to jump into BBSB at six, under the current situation, they stayed with the private school, or they moved to the district from another place and they possibly stayed with their old school online or some other program. But we can see that it's kind of an almost equal factor of students leaving and new enrollees just not coming in like they normally would. Now, the third group that seems to buck the trend this year with the choices a lot of people have been making with, under the pandemic, have been out-of-district enrollment. So we see them being relatively unchanged from previous years, very much as we have seen. In fact, they leveled off this year when we haven't seen some decline. Some of this leveling may be late open enrollments from out-of-district, people who are leaving their school district and preferring our programs. There may be some of that in there, but I do know a lot of the carryover from last year's state. We have, we have the same number of kids, out-of-district students stay with the district at the same rates that they have in the past. And the same is true with the new kids enrolling in our system as well. They stayed the same and they enrolled and they came to the school. So this was the third group that really seemed to be unaffected in terms of enrollment from the pandemic. And to round this out, I usually show births. Births are less appropriate for this year since our latest data is 2019. In fact, it's kind of nice to have something before all this happened. But we can see, we've known for a while that births have been declining. What we are seeing is the eastern districts or eastern communities starting to level out. And it's looking like they have, but 2019 has followed that trend for sure. And that's something we'll want to watch. But we're seeing Boulder births continue to decline almost at an increased rate in the recent years as well. And births aren't everything. Historically, in BBSB, births haven't always translated to kindergarteners at the same rate, since we do have a lot of migration in this community of people moving in and out in the past at least. But this chart shows births five to six years prior to the current resident kindergarten classes and how they relate to each other. And they don't always relate, as we can see here. The one thing left off is this year, because basically the kindergarteners who showed up fall off the chart. So what that actual kindergartner number is of the kids that are out there is to be determined. But this is something we definitely watch going into the future. So in summary, wrapping it up, steep enrollment declines this year, 5% losses, very steep for us. Our pre-pandemic expectation was closer to just a little less than 1%. We see those losses concentrated at elementary and especially kindergarten, and also middle losses were significant as well. High school, charter, and out-of-district appear to be unaffected this year under the circumstances, and losses not only from withdrawals, but also from fewer new enrollees coming into the district as well. And apart from the pandemic impacts, the overall trends, patterns we're looking at BBSB still appear to be in a slow decline once we get through, you know, these next few years related to the pandemic. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you so much. Richard, any questions?
Thanks, Glenn. Could you just expand a little bit on your last, last comment you made?
Oh, so we've known with, you know, coming back to this slide, you know, we have a very high high school class right here in our kindergarten classes, although I don't expect them to be quite this slow, are still coming in pretty small. So we really have a pattern now of slow gradual decline overall, you know, irregardless of what we're dealing with the pandemic. So that's what I mean.
So if this trend, so the trend is temporary then? Am I hearing you correct?
Uh, no, I'm thinking, what I'm saying actually is for, for a number of years to come, even before we're dealing with a pandemic, we're still expecting losses, not nearly as big as we're seeing this year, but losses year over year.
But more in Boulder, in the city of Boulder?
Boulder is definitely one of the bigger drivers in the declining enrollment. Yeah.
So at some point in time, we may not have too many kids in Boulder, probably.
Those proportions can change, but yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Kathy?
So Glenn, what's the timing for our next update on this? Because as you heard what Bill said, we kind of will be waiting to see what your projections are for enrollment for the setting our budget. So when will we hear from you next?
Well, in the past, we haven't done a projection update with enrollment. This is usually the only update I do to the board directly on enrollment. Projections, right now, I'm working on modeling stuff right now and hope to before December, end of December, to have some big raw numbers. And then we'll work those down to individual schools by the January or so.
Will we get an update, even though I know you said you don't usually do that?
I imagine we can do something. Sure.
I would imagine, Kathy, that we would weave that into our budget presentation, right? Not a separate presentation, but just kind of combine those. Does that make sense, Glenn?
Yeah, that would make sense. I can do that.
That's all. Thanks.
Donna? Donna?
No.
Oh, there you are.
No questions.
Okay, great. Kitty?
Same questions as Donna.
Lisa?
I'll skip too.
Stacy?
Nothing from me.
All right. This is great. Thank you so much. And, you know, well, over time, I think I've mentioned this in another meeting, we'll have to deal with this declining enrollment and how we're, you know, I think it's a priority of the board to keep all of our schools operating. But we, that is a big budget commitment, and we'll have to think about that as we move forward and what that means to the other initiatives we want to pursue. All right. So our next item is the legislative update, if anyone has one.
Well, Dean, I think we already heard about the special session. I don't think there's any direct impact on our budget. I don't know that we're going to apply for any of the money or getting any of the money on the hotspots or the accessibility. And I'll just add really quickly that for the first time, the Joint Budget Committee today met with members of CASBE, which I thought was a good outreach from the chair and the vice chair, both who appear to be very strong education advocates. So I think that bodes well for conversations going forward. And since it's so late, we'll just wait and talk about legislative stuff later.
Okay. So then we'll move on to our consent grouping. I'll read the list of items. 7.1 Personnel Item, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, November 10, 2020 Regular Meeting, 7.3 Approval of Minutes, November 17, 2020 Special Meeting, 7.4 Approval of Minutes, November 30, 2020 Special Meeting, 7.5 Approval of Minutes, December 1, 2020 Special Meeting, 7.6 2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, 7.7 2020 Redistricting of Director District Boundaries, 7.8 2021 RTD Contract for BBSD Employee Equal Pass Program, 7.9 Approval of a Contract to Adolphson and Peterson Mountain State LLC for Renovation of Boulder High School Rec Field House, 7.10 Approval of Joint Use Agreement with the City and the County of Brookfield, 7.11 Baseline Digital License Agreement and Temporary Construction Easement, 7.12 Cancellation of December 22, 2020 Board Meeting, 7.13 Certification of Mill Levees, 7.14 Closeout to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Work at the Bear Creek Elementary School, 7.15 Closeout to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Work at the Casey Middle School, 7.16 Closeout to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Work at the Crestview Elementary School, 7.17 Closeout to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Work at the Flatirons Elementary School, 7.18 Closeout to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Work at the Cold Hill School, 7.19 Closeout to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Work at the Jamestown Elementary School, 7.20 Closeout to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Work at Mapleton Early Childhood Center, 7.21 Resolution Number 2035 Boulder Preparatory One-Year Contract Extension, 7.22 Resolution Number 2036 Justice High School One-Year Contract Extension, 7.23 Resolution 2039 in Support of Prioritizing Teachers and School Personnel for the COVID-19 Vaccine, 7.24 Grant Co. Elementary School Empowering Action for School Improvement ESI, Colorado Department of Education 20, 7.25 Grant Operational Services Safe Reopening Schools Grant Colorado Department of Education. So, any items board members would like to pull from the consent agenda? Okay, I'm looking. I think I hit all six squares. Great. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? By Stacy, seconded by Kathy. Any discussion or comments? Kathy?
Just want to draw attention to anybody who's still listening to the one that is our resolution suggesting that we move teachers and educators somewhere in the second tier to receive vaccines so that we can continue to open our schools, given all of the conversations that we've had and all of the heartbreak and struggles that we're seeing in not being able to open schools. I just want to remind our public that we have that resolution out there and that I think it's an important conversation to have as we go forward and figure out the priorities for immunizations against COVID.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Laura, would you please call the role on the motion? Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess? Yep. Myers? You're muted.
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
And this?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. I think we have to look into if you can see a clearly mouthed yes, if that can count, even if you can't hear it. So, okay. Our next item is, all right, and our action items is the approval of the 2021 BBSD legislative platform. And if you just, if you read the email from Laura, you'll notice there's this correction, we deleted a sentence that we weren't supposed to delete that was on last year's platform. It was supposed to carry over. We put it back on. So we just got a little aggressive with the delete button. All right. Any questions or comments? Or actually, I need a motion first. Moved by Kathy, seconded by Stacy. Any comments? All right. Laura, would you please call the role on the motion? Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess? Yes. Myers? She said yes? Sergeant?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
This?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, we're on hour six of our board meeting plus 11 minutes. We have a couple of items. We do need to look at the Alicia Sanchez Elementary Plan. So I would like to suggest that we take a pass on the policy work tonight and put it to another meeting. Is everyone okay with that? Laura, procedurally, can I do it just the way I did it? Kathleen's giving a thumbs up. Yeah, giving a thumbs up. Awesome. All right. So we're going to skip to the study items, and we're going to talk about the much anticipated Alicia Sanchez Elementary Priority Improvement Plan. Okay.
Evening, President Marquess, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. So I'm here this evening accompanied by Principal Joel Rivera to share with you the work that he has engaged in in collaboration with the staff and community of Alicia Sanchez Elementary School. When we were before you in October, we shared their work to date in the area of school improvement. We're back in front of you this evening in compliance with the Colorado Department of Education's required processes for schools who have been previously given a categorical rating of turnaround. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to share the communication and collaboration activities that have occurred with the School Accountability Committee, as you heard referenced to by Ralph Frid earlier in this evening, and all of the families at Alicia Sanchez, as well as share the school improvement strategies that are in the draft UIP Unified Improvement Plan that was included in board docs this evening. Pending feedback from the board, the UIP will come back to you at the meeting on January 12 for your approval prior to being submitted to CDE on January 15. And so now I am going to turn it over to Principal Rivera for him to share information with you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. So thanks for having us here. Thanks for, hour six, that's a long time. So I hope to, I hope to be engaging here so you can kind of see what we're doing at the school and we can at the school and we can talk further about that. Before getting into the priority improvement, I just, I just feel compelled to throw out, first off, thanks to Dr. Anderson for all the support he has for Sanchez and all that you've done for us. We think you're doing a fantastic job. So I just want to show my appreciation to you. Also, just thank all the district support. For anybody that watches this that's still on there, Rob in Nativity, thank you so much for everything that you've done for us. Bridget Mutter, Steve Parker, Shannon Gamble, Bertha Arona, Maurice Henriquez, and Nicole Villa. Just all that district support that's going into this. So it's me presenting the plan that, you know, we worked collaboratively come up with, but we couldn't do it without you all. So I just want to show my appreciation and thank you for that because you've shown so much support for Sanchez and, and I just feel compelled to say that. So thank you. So are we going to go into the presentation? There we are. And Randy, you can go to the next screen. Okay. So just the turnaround process requirement. Now, this, the goal of this right here was to, we wanted to get authentic parent engagement with, or not just parent, but families and community on the school improvement process. So you look at some of the turnaround requirements right here, and there's some things that aren't shown on this. Like Ralph said earlier, we were doing this work with parents back in June, started with our SAC in June. We, I believe we met three times, just going through more learning around the turnaround process, looking at data, trying to hone in on what are some high leverage actions that we can take, especially as it pertains to family engagement. And then also for that, you know, we started collaborating with staff on this back in January. We were already thinking about this Fall 90-Day Plan through our UVA work. And so just getting feedback and a lot of, a lot of folks coming together to develop this plan. In August of 2020, we hooked up with our SAC, with our group again, and looked at some just data that we saw from the TLCC survey, especially focused around community and family engagement and effective engagements, and just started our conversations that way. We developed our turnaround strategy in September, and then that's when the, you know, UVA came in and did their audit with us for the Fall 90-Day Plan. Moving into next, next semester, and this is all, you know, the 90-Day Plan's coming into one on the, on the UIP. We notified our community of this public hearing tonight. We have some great parents and some great families sign up. And so I hope those put some smile on their faces because I honestly, it was for me sitting here listening to the parents talk, they basically said how, you know, how I hoped they were feeling. And so that was awesome to get them on here. So we did this communication, started back in October. I communicated basically every Friday from probably the beginning of October up until today and send letters out and try to get people more involved in this. And then tonight with the, with the public hearing and the board study on the UIP, I hope to have that approved and move forward into January. So that's kind of like the work that we did leading up to, leading up to tonight, really. You can go to the next slide. And so this just kind of spells it out a little bit, a little bit more with the dates and exactly what we did. So connecting with SAC, with our SAC, connecting with, with our families, we did a survey, if you remember from last year, we did a survey with our parents back in, I believe, February of 2020. And the next step of our 90, 90-Day Plan was to go into the, going to parent focus groups. Our first focus group is, was March 13th. You can probably all remember that day pretty well in your head. And so we had to shut that down. But we just finished two focus groups in the last week and we have two more that are coming up before we, before we go to our mid-year retreat with UVA in January. And so the focus groups were awesome. We had those, we had one yesterday, Becky McKay, who interpreted earlier, she facilitated a Spanish family focus group. So got great information on that to kind of guide our next, next semester 90-Day Plan. We met with SAC and you can see the dates right there. The big thing we did with SAC is we reviewed the TLCC survey. And the lowest scoring thing outside of time that teachers commented on, the next lowest scoring item we had was our parent and community engagement. And so we really just wanted to talk like, why do we have this perception of community engagement that's not effective? So we talked about that quite a bit with our SAC and developed some plans in our actions this semester, which is where the focus groups came out of. And then the, the information that we get from our focus groups right now will go into effect in our next 90-Day Plan. So you see right there, the, and some additional efforts to gather parent input for, for our UIP. And if, and Randy, you can move to the next slide. Before going into this, I just want to talk about the, the similarities and differences of the 90-Day Plan and the UIP. So in a UIP, it's very robust. I'm looking at a printout of it right now. We have about 27 pages. There's a lot of things on there from narrative, prior history, there's projections of goals that you have over, you know, this year and next year. So there's a lot of things that go into it. But like the heart of the UIP, like the actual work that we sit down and we look at as a staff and collaborate on as a staff and as a, as a community is found in our 90-Day Plan. And so in our 90-Day Plan, you know, we have our purpose statement that's in there. We have our goals that we want to attain specifically to get out of turnaround status or priority improvement, which we're in right now. And then it breaks it down to three main goals, and I have those up right there. And so we looked at those three goals, those three priorities, three rocks, as we've called it. And they boil down to those three strategies you're looking at. So the first strategy is all about lesson design and delivery. So if you remember last year, we looked at developing a lesson design that is very specific on what the kids are learning. So content language objectives, very intentional in how we differentiate for our students, very intentional in how we wanted to choose to engage our students, whether online or in person. At the end of that is like, how do we know that our students met those goals? Last year, we focused on, and this came out in our S3M work as well, working with district staff, but we focused on content language objectives. And then how do we, how do we know when they got there? How do we know when they made, made that objective? This year, we put a lot of focus in work and engagement. So at the beginning of the year in our 90-Day Plan, one of our action items was, how do we work to engage students? We focus a lot, obviously, on virtual learning or home learning. So we had a few experts come in and give some PD to our staff. We also, you know, Becky McKay worked with somebody in an international school. She got them to come in and talk about engagement as well. Moving into next semester, we are going to do work with Kagan. So our whole staff has Kagan training. And again, an effort to put more tools in teachers' toolbox for engagement. And so you'll see that in our, in our UIP and our 90-Day Plan as well. Strategy two, the, our second rock, so data informed collaboration with a commitment, commitments or relational trust. That's been kind of our bread and butter this year. As I said before, when we went to our mid-year retreat in January, it was a pretty profound experience for me and the people that went with me or the staff that went with me. And it really allowed us to like, okay, we talk about looking at data, we want to be data informed, we want to be very specific on, on what a kid is learning and where they're at and how do we improve upon their performance, whether it's providing extensions because they've mastered the content and we want to take them deeper, that they're on grade level, but we want to strengthen their content knowledge, or they're behind grade level and we want to provide intervention. So moving into this year, we are heavily focused on data-driven instruction. DDI is kind of another acronym for you all to learn. But it's been going amazing. And it really built off where last year, we built the foundational structures to have these data meetings and just have the mindset of, you know, we are going to reflect on our instruction by looking at student performance and outcomes, and then reviewing some high leverage items that we can look at or standards that we can look at and improve it from there. And so this has been great. We meet every Monday with, with each grade level. We go over student performance based off of benchmark assessments that we've created. We, we find a standard that we're going to focus in on at a universal level and that tier one instruction. And then we, we go through reteaching plans and reassessing, and then we review that as we go throughout the year. This has been amazing. And this is where a lot of the work is coming with the district. One of the biggest helps for us this year is having the district purchase illuminate and to use that as our assessment, assessment tool. And if you heard a parent talk earlier, you know, just about how we're going to look at data this year, what illuminate has done for us. For one, it's increased the rigor of our assessments, which therefore, you know, just naturally by that increases the, the rigor of how we instruct and what we're looking for students. And so we're just able to quickly gather information on where students at in terms of the grade level standards and then provide, provide instruction based off of, based off of that work. As we move into next semester and next year, what we want to do with illuminate is, you know, before we're looking at CMAS and we're saying, okay, our kids are performing here. And we wanted to shorten that cycle down based off of the DDI work. And so this year, we're looking at benchmark assessments and we meet for math, reading, math, reading, writing, and we also look at behaviors as well, behavior data. And we look at that benchmark. It's like six to eight week cycle assessments. And so what we're moving that to next, next semester, actually, and then next, next school year full on is how do we shorten that even more so that teachers can look at the assessments that they've created. We have a tool that we can look at pretty, that gathers the information, puts it in one spot, and we're able to break it down even into smaller chunks to help provide intervention. We're really excited about that. We actually had Steve Parker do, facilitate our staff meeting last week of showing teachers how to use that tool. And then we're going to provide teachers time this week to start just getting their hands, their, their feet wet, so to speak, in there and start creating their own assessments. And then next year, use that to just be more, just do this cycle more often, more frequently, and not six to eight weeks. Whereas before we were doing it, just looking at CMAS and making plans based off of that. So that's really kind of transformed the way our conversations go. You know, before it's kind of, it wasn't as focused or intentional on a specific skill or standard, I should say, that kids are learning. It was more like where gas, where holes. And we kind of focused a lot on intervention. And this really allows us to look at first instruction and make improvements based off of that. The last rock, strategy three, school-wide systems are clear, consistent, and support students, teachers, and families in creating a positive learning environment. This was a big one for us last year. One of my favorite just successes from last year that we were able to, to kind of review and look at and was looking at SWISS at our behavior data. And I don't know if I said this last time, but our behavior from, you know, the times that kids were, you know, given like an office referral, a referral that was sent down to us, you know, from October to, to March, our behavior referral data dropped by 85%. And still, when I say that, it doesn't sound real, but from February, from October to February and March, our referrals per day dropped by 85%. Think about that. That's 85%. That's more kids in class, more kids getting first instruction, more kids accessing content than ever before. And we were really on to something before we went into home learning. And so we, when the kids came back this year in the time that we were in, I mean, we were below the, you know, when we look at SWISS, it's a national program that schools use. Last year, if you look at the figures, we were well above the averages of the schools that use. We're talking about thousands of students in, in many different schools. This year, we're actually below the median in terms of where all the schools' behavior data is, is tracking behavior data throughout the, and we look at like per day data. So it, you know, the pandemic has nothing to do with it. It's like how many times the kids were shown to have, you know, behavior challenges during the day. You know, now we are below the median, which is fantastic. And actually, in the last month, we were just slightly above the 25th percentile. And so again, that's kids in school getting, accessing first instruction with our teachers and sitting there and learning. And so there's a lot to credit to that. We started with responsive classroom last year. All students, all teachers were trained in it. We, we also had a social emotional curriculum that all teachers were trained in at Second Step. We had Second Step Anti-Bullying Curriculum that we got a grant for that's run by our school psych, Allison Jazinski. And so we have that. And we just revamped our PBIS procedures and with, with our staff or with our, with our schools. And so like all these things, all these factors led to kind of that success that you saw in our discipline referrals. This year, we were able to kind of step out of the, the realm of looking at behaviors in a class and setting up a positive learning environment in terms of behaviors. And actually, responsive classroom has a huge academic component that's all pertains to engagement. So that was the PD at the beginning of the year for us, is the, the engagement that we have through, through responsive classrooms. So looking at academic choice, looking at engaging academics and activities that just provide situations for students that they're going to be successful in the classroom. So now we're talking about instruction more and talking about behaviors less and less, which is just an awesome conversation to have, especially for those of you who are familiar with the work at Sanchez, what we're doing now. It's just, it's incredible. And, and we've had a lot of buy-in from our staff. I do have to plug our staff as well. You know, when, when they look at this 90-Day Plan and they look at our, at our major improvement strategies, what, what they're called in the UIP, but our big rocks in our 90-Day Plan, they know our big rocks. They know the actions that we're doing to, to make sure that we hit those priorities. And then they're also involved in the process of how do we set up for the next 90-Day Plan? We're a part of it. We're going to buy into it and we're going to go for it with full effort. And it's just been an amazing process to be a part of. And again, it started at the top with the support we have from the superintendent and our, our network leaders, all the way down to the buy-in from the staff. So it's just an incredible effort that we've had so far. I think that's it for that. This slide right now, the next slide, just to open it up for questions for you all.
Thank you, Joel, so much for sharing that detailed information about the community engagement, but also the, the really hard work that you and the staff have engaged in. I applaud all of you because you have put in some very tremendous instructional infrastructure systems and supports in addition to behavioral and social emotional supports. And we are very, very excited about this work and thank you for all you've done. And yes, we are very happy to answer any questions that you all may have for us.
All right. Thanks so much. Anyone have a question? Why don't you just raise your hand? I can see you all. Kitty?
Yes. First of all, congratulations on all of the work that you've been doing and the engagement you've got. This all sounds so positive and I'm excited about it. One question you answered for me, which I had had at the bottom of page seven, was that illuminate is the name of a program. Just the way the sentence was structured, I wasn't completely sure of what that meant. And then the other question I have is at the top of page eight, and it was the I-Ready scores from winter 2020. And for kindergarten and first grade, how reliable is that? Because I know Rob was talking about kids on I-Ready scoring, you know, way off the charts because their parents were helping them.
Well, it is pretty reliable for us. I think the main difference is, is when you look at third, fourth, and fifth grade, when kids take an assessment like CMAS, it's very standards-based. So it's grade level-based, standards-based, where I-Ready is more of like a flexible type of assessment that's skills-based. So it looks at the kid's skill level versus the standard level that, that, that the third, fourth, or fifth grade measures are from CMAS. So when you see like improvement for our kindergarten, first, and second graders, looking at the skills, I would say it's a pretty accurate assessment for that. As far as how that transfers to CMAS, I think we do get this like inflated sense of how students are going to perform looking at I-Ready versus looking at something like illuminate in the benchmark assessments that we create. I mean, that was one of the major changes for us after going to New Mexico. You know, the work that we looked at and the author of the work that presented to us, you know, he does talk about, you know, if we're using standards to, to see if kids meet grade level expectations, you got to figure out how to assess those standards. And so it starts with the assessment. And for us, that assessment that we were providing, we were looking at for our data, you know, it wasn't matching the rigor that, that they, that students are going to be expected to do, especially as it turns, as it pertains to us getting out of turnaround status. So looking at our SPF, those, those tests are really hard. They're, they're, you know, cognitively, they're very difficult. They're very in-depth type questions. You know, language-wise, you know, there's a, there's a heavy language component of that. So, you know, when you're a school that has a high ELL population like we do, you know, we have to take that into account as well. And so like those benchmark assessments on illuminate are pretty incredible. And I do, I invite anybody to join any of those meetings if you ever want to see what they're doing. We, we have people coming observing all the time. So yeah, part of that process is like looking at some high leverage, you know, standards that, that kids are scoring, you know, not where we're expecting them to score, and then really focusing in on that on our reteach plans. Whereas looking at I-Ready, you're looking at more skills-based. It allows us to do individual, small groups to provide more intensive intervention based at those kids' level. But really, when you get to third, fourth, and fifth grade, it's more standards-based. So I think that's a big difference.
Okay. Yeah, because that, that was really exciting to see those numbers in kindergarten and first grade.
And they, and those are, and it's great information for us as well. Like they do, they're starting there. And then once they get into that more content-driven, you know, as a grade level, as you get up, up in the grade levels, especially when they hit third grade, you know, it's less the skills-based and more the content-based. So we do, that's, that's a focus when we go to, you know, in our benchmark assessments.
Thank you.
Okay. Richard, your hand is up. And then Stacy?
Joel, thank you very much for that, that report and that update. I did go to the UIP and I've got a couple of questions in relation to the UIP itself. When you look at the additional trend information, can you give me a sense of some of the questions that were being asked on that TLCC? can you give me a sense of some of the questions that were being asked on that TLCC survey? Just that I can understand it better?
Yeah, absolutely. So the TLCC survey, I believe it's Teaching and Learning Conditions in Colorado, I think is what it stands for. I teach, schools do it every two years. There's one caveat I probably should throw out there. It's a teacher perception survey. And so when we did our focus groups, you know, one of the things that the parents in these focus groups talked about is, you know, the, the teacher perception of how we operate and the parent feelings or perception about how the school works to engage them were a little off. So there's some work that we need to do in, you know, providing more communications to our, especially to our staff, just about what's happening and, and who's a part of that. But they asked the staff, it's a series of questions. I think there's probably 10 categories and there's maybe like, you know, four to eight questions per category. So there's a, there's a, it's a big thing. It goes from school leadership to teacher leadership to classroom conditions, health and safety. But one of those is community engagement. And so the, the one we focused on real heavily is we scored thirty-one percent favorability on the school's effort to engage families. And thirty-one percent favorability, I think the district average was eighty-four percent favorability. And so we talked about that quite a bit in SAC. We talked about that in our parent focus groups. And we developed strategies on both of those, you know, working with, you know, our, our SEL team, our wellness team, social emotional learning team. We call it SEL team. So we developed strategies kind of like, okay, how can we, you know, better discuss like how we are engaging families and what that looks like? How can we bring teachers involved and get them involved in that? So we have a communications team now that's comprised of teachers. We have a family support team, which, you know, out of necessity back in March became very important. So we just continued both of those, both of those groups moving into this year. But we did look at that, the question basically asked, schools' efforts to engage families are effective. And then it's strongly agree, disagree. And, and so we were thirty-one percent favorability where the district score was eighty-four percent. So clearly something is off there. So we did talk about that and that was, we put that action or the goal of going from thirty-one percent to at least matching the district score of eighty-four percent as a goal that we wanted TLCC survey. And so that's where you saw the, the survey come out. That's where you saw the parent focus groups come out. And then next year take, we, we've already got some great ideas from the focus groups that we're going to implement next semester. And then we're, we're just going to do that process again at the end of this year. It's just like we did with SAC in June to help develop our Fall 21 action plans, especially as pertains to family engagement.
Thanks a lot, Joel. Would it be possible for maybe you share some of the focus group input?
Yeah, absolutely.
You don't have to do that now.
Okay, I was like, I'm ready, man.
I know, but it's already said thirty-six. I'd like to, I'd like for you to maybe share with me and the board some of that focus group input later on, okay?
Okay, I, I mean, I, and, and I, there's not a lot of time. I mean, just real briefly, briefly, the issue we got was one, they wanted more opportunity for connections between kids, especially. It was all kind of like home learning driven at this time, at the top of everybody's mind, obviously. So more opportunities for connection between kids. And then more opportunities for how can we support our kids' emotional state at home? Which you kind of heard today in some of the parent comments. So we were able to talk a lot about Second Step, our SEL curriculum. Because they talk about just really basic skills for kids, like, you know, how to calm down, how to, how to have empathy for one another. And then how to, how steps for problem solving, just really great information. And there's a lot of, there's a huge parent component of that. And, and so we talked about with our, with our families and we just kind of made a short little plan about how to just communicate those efforts out to families. So we're going to put that, that's just like low hanging fruit that we can address right away. And then the, and that was also echoed in our Spanish-speaking group as well, our Span, that, that group as well. And the addition that they had was just more support on some, some school things that we do, you know, using technology, obviously. Support for reading at home and, and just, you know, bringing them along with us in terms of how they can support their student at home. So it's really good information that, that we're going to put into place. So those are the three outcomes that came out so far. We have two more focus groups coming up before January twentieth.
Well, thank you so much, I appreciate that. The other thing that I had in terms of the question is you mentioned that one-third of the population or the school enrollment is emergent bilinguals. And one of the main goals that you have is for these emergent bilinguals to learn English. And my question is, as, as they're learning English, what are you doing for them in the content area? As it relates to language arts, math, et cetera?
All right, no, absolutely. And so, you know, one of the things from our 90-day plan last year was we do have interventionist support at every grade level. And this comes into, you know, probably into like the district strategic plan of, of like resources that schools need based off of the, based off of the need, resources based off of the need. And so we do have a language interventionist at every grade level that works with, works with the grade level teachers. We have co-teaching in every grade level. This year we're co-teaching in writing, which, you know, if you think about the language skills that could be built and developed through the writing process, it's just a great opportunity to have that, that knowledge and that support with each grade level. So we do have, we do have that co-teaching in every grade level. And then when you look at the DDI work, I mean, really you're identifying where kids are at. And then you are making your instructional plans based off of their performances, which include language, obviously includes, you know, language acquisition. That's a big one. And what we also included on our, in our DDI work is, you know, as we're making these reteach plans, you know, what, what, what is our, looking at our cultural, culturally appropriate teaching? So there is actually a question after we kind of go through, you know, the standard we're going to focus on, how can we look at this instruction in a culturally appropriate way? You know, in, in some surface level things like, you know, that come off the top of, you know, our heads are usually like, you know, vocabulary, accessing background knowledge, making content relevant for students. And what is that? Getting to know your students so that you can develop some really engaging lessons that can connect to them. You know, the whole like, why do I have to learn this? And so putting that into our, into our, our instruction when we're, when we're building our, designing our lesson. And it's all part of our lesson design, our Rock One, like the engagement strategies and differentiation strategies that we have kids. And then they have experts in there in the DDI meetings with our language acquisition teachers. So there's a lot going on with language acquisition. If you, if you look at kind of our results, you're talking about the trend analysis. You know, I believe we went up sixteen point five percent in growth from last, two years ago to last year. And so we're already seeing some positive outcomes from that. We need to continue that trend probably for another two or three years to have them, you know, reach grade level before they leave our school. But the, there's, there's already early results that are showing, even in the middle of, you know, like a switch to home learning in March and, and the pandemic. So, you know, we have our work cut out for us there, but we do see the results happening already.
And some of those interventions, does that include also some kind of native language support?
You know, we have, one of the things we did this year, we were able to do is we have a Spanish speaker at every grade level, which has been awesome. We have a great family support team, all bilinguals. So we're able to connect with families and able to provide materials, resources and support needed there. Becky McKay is just fantastic as our assistant principal, being able to, you know, provide that support as well. And so we do have that at every grade level.
Thanks, Joel, good job.
Thank you, Richard.
Okay, Donna, any questions? Oh, Stacy, I'm sorry.
I don't have any questions, just a few comments. One, I want to thank you for hanging in there through this meeting to give your presentation. And, you know, how excited you are about what's happening at your school is really infectious. So I'm kind of sad that more people didn't stick around to hear what you had to say. And I just want to give you my congratulations for your hard work and your progress. And I wanted to share that when the parents were speaking, I was smiling, just like you did. And one thing particularly stuck with me was one of the parents that said how proud she was to have open enrolled at your school.
Yes.
And that, I just think that's awesome. So keep up the good work.
Thank you, Stacy, so much, I appreciate that.
Any other comments?
Now, just, whoops, just, I do admire your enthusiasm. I'm sure the whole staff is as enthusiastic as you are. It's, like Stacy said, it's very impacting, infectious to all of us, thanks.
Oh, I hope so, thank you, Donna. Yeah, and I just to add on to that, I, I can't praise our staff enough. You know, this is hard and, and I've had conversations with them. It's like, you know, the expectation of, of being in turnaround while, while going through a pandemic and moving in and out of home learning to in-person learning, that's, it's, that, that's got to be tough. I, I just shown that, that empathizing with them. Because they really are working hard and they want it, like they, 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 they want this. A lot of staff have been there for a while. And I just like, I, I hope that they, they feel the same way I do and that we're doing the right work. But it's, it's, it's the best experience I've ever had. And I've said that these last two school years, this has just been an incredible opportunity for me. And the work has been awesome together. So thank you for that, Donna.
Okay, Kathy, have your hand up again?
Again, I haven't said anything yet on this. I'll be quick, I promise. The thing that impressed me almost the most, Joel, was your behavior data that you gave us.
Yeah.
That, that says a lot to me about your climate and culture. And I'm always trying to look for ways to see what's going on in the school besides CMASS and other scores. So that was, thank you for sharing that, that, that was pretty awesome. And then I just have a really quick question for you. So, you know, the UIP talks about root cause analysis and it seems like there's three basic root causes that you go to. I'm just wondering which is the one that you thought was the most challenging and that you're still really struggling with? And if we could be supportive?
Well, I, I would say the one that I saw like the greatest, and looking at it as like probably the biggest opportunity we had, was the data piece. And so like last year when we start, this was like a priority last year. And, and looking back on it, it was like we were setting up such a huge like foundational structure piece and a mindset. Like we are going to look at student performances to reflect on our instruction and fix, and, and, and improve our first instruction at a universal level. Because two, a lot of times it's really easy to go to like, I, I taught these kids and get it, now I'm going to go straight to intervention. But for our teachers this year to say like, I taught it, our kids perform here and this is what we're going to reteach doing it this way. That was just like an incredible mind shift, you know what I mean? So we're looking at like, what can we control in terms of like our educator, teacher behaviors? And going and using, having a tool. Because last year we were creating assessments, we were looking at different assessments, we were creating spreadsheets. Like felt like every week our teachers were making new spreadsheets to look at data. And now illuminate with the work that, you know, we did with the district. We have an interventionist, Jess Rothman, who she was, she went with us to our DDI, to our mid-year retreat last year, leading some of these, leading the facilitation effort of DDI, having her in place there. And she's done a fantastic job with what she's doing. That, that has been like the biggest like opportunity for us and I think it's going to probably pay the biggest dividends. I mean, if you ever have a chance to look at some of these, you know, it's called uncommon schools, you know, with the DDI work and look at their outcomes, like I'm, we're expecting that. Like we are doing the things that we learned are the best practices and we want those outcomes. And so that, that has been like the biggest challenge, but also the biggest opportunity. And I think it's the one we really like took the bull by the horns on that one and, and we're running with it right now and it's going really well.
Can I just say how awesome it is that I asked you if it's a challenge and you answered it with what's an opportunity? Thank you.
No problem.
Other, Rob?
I just want to thank Joel, thank Robin for all of their incredible work. Thanks for hanging in there with us at the, maybe the record-breaking latest board meeting that we've had. And I wish this could have gone first. I think that the board members, I'm so incredibly proud of Joel's leadership, of the things that his team is taking on. They are doing the right work. And as you hear Joel speak, what you're hearing is, is a very strong instructional leader who knows and understands how to improve outcomes for all kids. As we think about the, our partnership with University of Virginia School Turnaround, high-quality professional development, high-quality executive leadership development. And, and we, we continue to look forward to the days that other schools can be learning from the, from the strong practices at Sanchez. And so change takes time. I think that we're in year two of the partnership. And, but, but it doesn't happen without a, a strong leader. So thank you, Joel. And, and thank you so much to Robin Fernandez, who is at Sanchez every, every week. And I think that the board, it's important for the board to know and understand as we've, as we've talked about treating schools differently and supporting them differently, that Columbine, Sanchez, Cole Elementary are getting intensive supports from our district, the, the levels of resources that they need. And I, I think what you're going to see is that's going to make just a significant difference in the outcomes that we're getting for those students. So just really proud, so thankful for everything that's happening at Sanchez and just excited for the future.
Okay, Lisa, and then Kitty?
I just want to say it's, it's clear how intentional and thoughtful this process is and how passionate you are about the work. So just thank you so much for all you're bringing.
Thank you.
Kitty?
So again, thank you. And it's so nice to end the meeting on a positive note. But one of the things you said struck a chord with me when people said, why do we have to learn this? And it reminds me of, I was teaching an eighth grade social studies class and this kid said, why do we have to learn this? And I said, so you get jokes. So I told them that science has now quantified beauty and the unit of beauty is a milli-hellen, the amount of beauty required to launch one ship.
I'll have to, I'll have to remember that because my, my daughter just asked me, why do I have to learn this the other day? And she's in sixth grade and I, and it was a math question and I'm, I was a math teacher. I was like, what? So I'll have to put that in my back pocket.
So you get jokes.
All right, any other comments or questions for the Sanchez team? No? It's only 10 minutes until we hit seven hours. You guys just want to chat or? All right, our next item is agenda setting. I dare you. All right, is everyone okay if I adjourn? And thank you all for being here. It was a great meeting and hopefully we're in person soon. Bye.
Happy holidays, everyone. We won't see you till after the holidays.
Oh, yeah, right.
Oh, yeah.
Hola.
All right, bye.